Got to get order here. You got a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
President.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Euring?
Here.
Vice Chair Massa?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
I'll go to Dennis with the pledge of allegiance, Dennis.
Thank you. I move that the agenda be approved as staff recommends with item 4A continued to March 2nd, 2020.
Chair Jennings, staff would also like to continue 3A1 to March 2nd. That's the consent item for the resolution on the follow-up CDP for the pile repair on Cliffside.
Okay. I will accept that.
I'd like to pull 3B2 briefly.
No, this is for the agenda.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None, it's unanimous. Report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 7th, 2020.
Okay, Richard, staff update on the Woolsey fire rebuild process?
Good evening, Chair Jennings. As members of the planning commission, I'd like to give you a quick update as to where we are with the fire rebuild recovery process. To date, we've, as we mentioned, we've approved a little over 200 homes. And this is a demonstration of the mix of approvals we've been issuing. The majority of the approvals, as you can see, are for the like-for-like rebuilds, plus 10%. There's been a small portion, 14 of them. These are homes where there's something drastically different. They could be the same size, but perhaps on a different location, or it could have been also a larger home. What this chart shows you are the statistics of the types of applications that we are seeing. The important takeaways from it are the lighter blue color lines. Those represent the planning verifications. Those are folks that are coming in for like-for-like, up to 10% increase in the size of the home. And as you can see, this year, to date so far these past two months, we've seen a drastic decrease in the number of requests that we've received for reviews. In addition, the orange colored lines there, those are approvals where perhaps they're doing something different, say an addition above the second floor, above 18 feet, so a second floor addition, or perhaps citing the home a bit differently. Those applications have dropped off to one. And so we're starting to see a slowdown the last two months. Perhaps that will change as we come closer to the end of the fee waiver program. To date, we've waived approximately $2.1 million worth of fees. As the program was adopted by the city council, it will end in August. So it's important that we have a chance to review those projects and they get submitted to the planning department for our review.
August, or, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, June.
Okay. And then, I just want to also throw in that the city council is going to be considering an additional resolution dealing with fee waivers on Monday, the 24th. That will reiterate what Richard is saying and also address some additional time for people to get through the plan check process, so.
So at this point in time, we just want to remind folks to get us their applications because it is important so we have time to review them if they wish to qualify for that program. These are the numbers that our building and safety division is seeing. So they have 77 projects that are currently in plan check. 70 building permits have been issued. And to date, we have one house that is completed, and there's a second home which we are finishing up the inspections on so that we can get that one added to the list. Available for any questions if there are any.
Questions?
Got one quick. Richard, the people who have not submitted a plan for the home, let me breathe. Have we made contact with everybody whose house got burnt and we have them on some list that we're following up with and?
We actually finished a second round of doing that today, creating a list. The building and safety department has been the ones to reach out to residents who, we've got two groups. We reach out to those who we haven't heard from at all. So they have not submitted some sort of application to the planning department for review. And then also, we have a second list of applications that were approved by the planning department but have not yet submitted to plan check. And so as I mentioned, a few months ago, we did one outreach program. And today, we provided the building and safety department with another list, and I anticipate that starting this week, they'll be making contact. And what we've done is, we have done mailers, and then we use whatever phone number we have either from city records or that we can obtain from the LA County Assessor's Office.
Am I to assume that at this point in time, at least once, we've made some kind of a phone contact with everybody, or that's in the process to trying to get done?
At this point in time, at least once is best we could. I think in some cases, we may have obsolete phone numbers, and then unfortunately, the mailing address often is a vacant lot at this time. So, but we did do it once, and we're trying a second time.
Gotcha.
Anybody else? Let me scroll over it just one more time with the deadline. The deadline is June 30th, is it?
At this point in time, for both building and safety and planning, it is June 30th, yes.
So what that means is that in order to take advantage of the fee waiver, you have to be through planning by June 30th, right? You have to be out of, you have to have your approvals by June 30th?
Yes, and I also believe at this point in time, the same is true for building and safety.
Okay, so you have to be, you have to be through plan check as well in order to, in order to take advantage of that fee waiver?
Yes.
And then, as I mentioned, the city council is looking at some additional time that they're going to be discussing on Monday night. And at this point, I think the staff report has been issued on this, and it would require your planning application to be deemed complete by June 30th, and building permits done by the end of the year.
By the end of this year, the 31st.
Yeah, so it's a little additional time to, the idea being to get people through the planning process and then allow them some additional time to get through plan check, which can take a little while.
Okay. And following up on Steve's question, the state and the county did their checking. You used to be able to go online and see whether they, how many people had checked in and all the rest of it, how many sites had been cleared? Are there still any uncleared sites that we're aware of?
To my knowledge, that process has been completed.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Written in oral communications from the public, nothing good. Planning Commission staff and, uh, Commission? Come up. Oh, on 2A, no, 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 this is. Oh, you want, that is right, 2A, 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 yeah. Go ahead, Doug.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to comment kind of from the private sector on some of the questions that have been coming up about the fire rebuilds. And what we're finding is that there are quite a number of people that are literally still working out their insurance issues. And they are stuck, and they don't, they're like working them out, they're still working them out. And there is just a lot of people that are in that category. Now, I don't have a poll number, but just from what we get in our own office and what I hear from brokers and other people. So that is something that they have, they can't start, so until they kind of know. So that's going to come up, as I know, when the city council looks at these dates. You had to throw a date, I got it, but we're going to have to look at what that date means. I also met with Yolanda Bundy earlier this evening, just a few hours ago, and we talked about what that date meant and whether or not you can just get a planning approval, which you're not going to get a building and safety done because it takes, you've got to hire all the consultants. But the PV approvals, as you know, happen as quickly as sometimes a day. So it's just getting in there and getting that so the planning department knows, one, you're doing something. And then the date, I guess at the end of the year, six months later, which is supposedly when you're supposed to get a building permit done. So I think there's just a little bit of nomenclature and trying to understand this. But the general public, as we're getting, is definitely, the insurance issue is huge because it's like we have clients from out of the country, a client from Hong Kong, other places around the country, and they're just trying to figure that out. And people are in lawsuits and other things with their insurance companies. So it's just a bigger picture thing that's happening, certainly in the private sector. But everyone else seems to be working well. And the other bit of compliment is that I definitely want to give Yolanda an absolute, just public recommendation as far as what she's been doing and shaping and literally calling people personally and walking them through, handholding, walking them through the departments. It's just unbelievable. And, and we're getting such incredible comments back from people because they just don't know. Whether you're elderly or whether you don't want to do this, or why the heck would you hire an architect? Anyways, you know, you don't plan on these things. But she just has taken this on, and she is such a gem to the city, and I wanted to publicly make that a statement because I've never met somebody like that, and we are so fortunate to have her working on our behalf. So just wanted to make that a public record. Thank you. Or if you have any questions, other than I'm available for questions on, from what we're seeing on the fire rebuilds.
I do have a question. If, if the fees are waived, what is the problem with getting the insurance if you can get your application in for free? As far as planning goes, I know everything else.
It's just the act of starting, they just feel like they have to work out the monetary part. Listen, I agree with you. It's kind of like, okay, you'll get that maybe worked out, but it doesn't hurt you to at least prove what this base square footage is, to work your 10% from. We can, we don't have to design anything. Like, we just need to get a piece of paper in to say, hey, we're trying to get the 3,400 square feet or whatever it is. I know you worked this square footage out, but it's just getting them to move that step forward, it's just very tough. PTSD factor and everything else is still very much a real thing. So yes, I agree with you, that's what we're telling them. But there's a large section of people that certainly are in this boat.
Do they, do they realize how many fees they're saving? Do they have an idea of that?
No, no, they do, but it's, you're right, it's just educating them to take this next step. Don't just wait and think that you're going to get there. But it doesn't have to take a lot of time. You don't have to design a whole house to get the planning approval, okay? Your first piece of paper is getting that square footage, base square footage resolved. And once you have that, then you can start designing and everything else. But, you know, that first gate to get into the city, that's important because apparently, there's a couple hundred people that still have not submitted, or they haven't, they don't know where they're at with their project. And out of the 450 projects, how many Malibu projects are there? Something, less than 500?
There's like 460.
460, I was given a number of about 200, or apparently, or we're still kind of, where are they? What are they doing? I mean, a half? So we have to work on that date. I know this is going to come before the city council. I've talked to a few city council members on that because, listen, I mean, we still have to, you know, comply and make sure we have our citizens kind of correctly so they're not just running at the last minute. So we're doing anything we can to kind of help that out. We'll get there, we'll do it all together.
Yeah, I think that, I have at least one client who's an elderly woman who really just hasn't got a clue as to how to get a handle on a thing, how to move forward. Not enough insurance, her house was paid off long ago, so she had kind of minimal insurance on the thing. And, yeah, it just, it just, yeah.
It's just taking that step. So, but I'm just saying, I mean, from hearing it from Yolanda's side, it's like, just come down, you meet someone like that that'll literally just walk you through. It's, it's not a daunting process, talking to anybody that's watching this in person, to just make that move. And, and it's just, everyone has open arms down here, and I keep telling everyone, the process is going really, really well. Trust me, you work with other cities, I mean, even where Yolanda came from, City Ventura, and it just, they're still struggling up there. But Malibu is really making great strides, and I keep telling everyone that keeps trying to say they're not, they don't quite realize what else is out there. So that, that is a big kudos to what's been happening so far and what Richard's doing, so.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Anyways, anything else? Thank you.
And Norm, public comment?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to address this issue. There are a lot of costs that the city doesn't pay for, such as way back when, when you got your house approved. Now, they want to make sure that the geology is safe. You had to hire a geologist, you had to do cross-sections. That costs a lot of money. The city doesn't pay for that. The city pays for their geologist to review your geologist's work. But you've got to have the money to do that to begin with. And there are other issues as well that are very similar to that, grading. They may want a topography map and a survey before they do their review. How much grading is involved? How many cubic yards? The city's not going to tell you that, and they're not going to pay for, for doing the work necessary. It all costs a great deal of money, and if you haven't worked it out with your insurance company, you don't have any money. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Norm.
Richard, does anybody, has anybody done a survey to see how many burnouts are for sale? That aren't ever going to come to you?
We have been actually tracking that. We've, I think to date, the number's probably around 10. But the way we get that information is roughly every six months, the assessor's office provides us ownership information for the parcels in the city. And so we can flag changes, and that to date has been how we've been doing it. A few folks have actually told us, like, there's a project in plan check that has switched owners. But usually, it's by way of the assessor's office.
You're talking about projects that have been sold, not necessarily the ones that are up for sale, is that correct?
Correct, the ones, these have changed hands.
Well, if you, you pick up a copy of homes and land, there's a couple brokers that are advertising, and one of them has 25 on his page. So I'm just trying to get an idea of how much more work you guys had, but I guess we'll have to see.
Those won't qualify for fee waivers in all events. So let's get planning commission comments and staff responses. Steve?
Just one quick, Bonnie, last week at the coastal commission, they came up with this plan to put houses on stilts with six and a half feet of sea rise coming at us. You're familiar with that, I assume? I'm just wondering, what, what, how is that going to impact us? Is that going to be part of what we have to consider? Do we just ignore that? I don't know. It was just an interesting.
We have gotten comment letters on some beachfront projects along the way that have commented on the assumptions about sea level rise and, but we have not gotten comments on every project. For example, the one, one of the ones that we'll see in a little while, 33608 Pacific Coast Highway, we've not gotten any comments from coastal commission on that one, whereas the coastal commission recently appealed the project at the mouth of Trancas Creek. So as far as how that's going to affect us, we're, as I think I've mentioned before, the city coastal engineering staff is working on updated guidelines for wave upper studies and things like that. The coastal commission is also, has a grant program for encouraging cities to update their LCPs related to climate change and sea level rise and resiliency and those sorts of things. So that is potentially an avenue for the city to go. But at this point, we're sort of in a transition to change from what we've been using for an assumption to something more, a bigger sea level rise.
So it sounds like unless the coastal commission contacts us about a particular house, we're going to go with what we've currently been doing?
Yeah, for the time being, because we have to be real specific about the process of updating applicants about, you know, a change in the standard, standard of review and things like that.
Got you, I always come to you last. Rich, you got any comments?
Yeah, just, I did want to touch on something as we were talking through the concerns on timing, Richard, for the Woolsey applicants. Can you just kind of walk through the difference in what rights they get or what reduced fees timing versus the rights to build per, for the new, for those rules?
So the dates that I gave, and I hope this answers your question, so please let me know. The dates that I, I gave in my earlier discussion there, those have to do with strictly fee waivers. And the ability to, essentially, if you are owner who occupied the home at the time of the fire, and you will be occupying the new home, you do not have to pay the city for permit costs. Separate from that, there was a two-year grandfathering period to get, to obtain a planning approval to allow you the ability to maintain all of your existing non-conformities. So that would be for homes that are too tall, too large, or their setbacks are not consistent with current codes. So you had two years to obtain a planning approval and four years to obtain a building and safety permit.
Thank you. So, so there are really two dates looming then, it would be when your fees could be waived and then when you would no longer have that right?
And I should add, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the fee waivers are specific to property owners. The ability to maintain your non-conformity runs with the property and not the homeowner.
Great, thanks for clarifying that, so go ahead.
Yeah, Bonnie, on the, oops. On this thing about the sea level rise, the house that got turned down by coastal, we passed like three months ago or something. So when we give somebody a permit, shouldn't we be warning them that they need to know that they can, it's not necessarily good?
We, we, the staff has a lot of conversations with applicants about just this topic. As an example, we have somebody who's been processing an application for CDP amendment, and the question came up about whether this beachfront house, whether the changes to it and the swimming pool they wanted to add needed to be reviewed under just the same set of studies and standards that the original project had been reviewed under or the new, more current wave upper assumptions and things like that. And I discussed it with the applicant and said, hey, the coastal commission's been looking at some of these, and they, you know, you may want to contact them about what their opinion is. They, coastal commission staff felt like it should be reviewed under new reports. I feel like that's, in this case, really kind of impractical because the house is under construction. So, yes, to answer your question, we do have those discussions with applicants.
Well, if he sends it to the coastal commission, coastal commission's going to say, I went to new rules, I would think, right?
And that's what they said, so.
To clarify, maybe, I mean, I've heard literally seven different numbers of what those inches would be coming from, ranging from 40 inches to 80 inches and most clustered around 60 something. But what, what, if I'm understanding this correctly, they've just made a finding that there's a, whatever's analogous to a triable issue of fact, and now they're going to hear the case more closely, at which point they will come out with a determination eventually about what the level needs to be based on that one case, and then that one case will be, will create precedent? Or are we still waiting beyond that for a formal ruling?
They will review this, that particular appeal application as a de novo hearing, basically a brand-new hearing. So they will consider all the site-specific issues associated with that application. Whether they would consider that a precedent for the whole city of Malibu, I don't know. It seems, I mean, the, the city is supposed to have its own ability to set its standards and things and get, and get them certified. So this is sort of a backwards way of, you know, getting around to that if they're going to appeal every beachfront project and then review it under a different standard than we have. So our city engine, coastal engineers are working on this, they just haven't finished yet.
Any other comments, Greg, or are you done?
There, this is both sort of a news and also there's a question for staff buried in here somewhere. There are about 30 new housing laws in the state now, affecting all kinds of different things, tenants, rent control, different things. A number of them may affect the ADU law that's coming up. And specifically, ADU provisions, one, one new one prohibits imposing minimum lot size requirements, prohibits requiring off-street parking. It allows for junior ADUs in a house, inside the main house, plus.
These are all the, just to jump ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're taking all of that into consideration, which is why it's taking, these were just passed in, I think, October of 2019. And so we've been, while we initially started just updating the ADU draft that the commission last looked at, based on your feedback, we, as of October, needed to update it with all of these new laws and things, so.
Well, and, and just, okay, so I guess that was, part of the question is, there's a wide variety of stuff out there, and then that's why you're taking the time? That's the answer to that. And just to point out a few, a few of those 30. One makes it unlawful for homeowners association to condition that, to put it in any condition that unreasonably restricts construction of ADUs. And basically, what I was getting at a second ago was that you could have a junior ADU inside a main house plus a ADU guest house, as we've called it. And they're now calling this the triplexification of land use. And even, there's a new law that says you will be able to sell that separately. You could just sell the ADU to somebody else. So this, this is, this is, you know, on the one hand, it makes sense that if we have an increasing population and we have a housing shortage, that we should be acting, condensing that housing together and sparing the wild land and so forth. But on the other hand, I think Malibu is a special case because we have the highway that just is kind of a limiting bottleneck that just says, we can't have three times as many residences with three times as many families, et cetera. So it's a tough situation, and I'm just calling this out now because I think we're going to need a lot of public input on this.
Okay, Bonnie, your comments?
Yes. And just to kind of close out the ADU discussion, the other complicated thing for the city is that we are trying to carefully balance the mandates of the ADU laws and the housing crisis that, that stems from along with the state coastal act, which, you know, is implemented in Malibu through our LCP. And so those things are at odds with each other on some scores, and so we're trying to balance that with all those things in mind. And that's why it's, it's been taking us a little longer than we initially anticipated. To bring that back. Okay, I have just a couple of announcements. I threw them on a PowerPoint just so it might be easier for people to remember. Our public safety manager is working on a wildfire protection plan for the city that we received a grant for. The, there will be two workshops held this week. They're the very same thing, one's on Thursday at 6:00 PM here, and the other one's on Saturday at 10:00 AM. So please attend that and find out more about the wildfire protection plan. Next, we have a public hearing at the city council meeting on Monday, the 24th. If anybody hasn't heard this yet, the city council is responding to a allegation that our elections aren't being held lawfully and is exploring whether to start holding elections on a district basis. And so there's a whole legislative process that's involved with that. The second public hearing will be held on Monday as part of the council meeting, and that will involve an opportunity for the public to comment on what should be considered when drawing the district maps. There is more information on the city's website at malibucity.org/districtelections. This is, this would be a really big change in the city, and so it's really important for the community to be aware and to participate in that process. Question?
I believe the next meeting after this, a week after this one, we can, or two weeks?
There's a.
And they're supposed to present the maps? How can they do that?
No, that's not, that's true. And I think actually the next slide, if Parker can switch to the next one. This is a screenshot of the, the city's webpage, malibucity.org/districtelections. And this is laying out the, the schedule, and the schedule's evolving as things like getting a demographer under contract to help draw the maps and things like that, as those things happen. So this is, the meeting on Monday is to receive input, to be used to draw the maps. No maps have been drawn so far. So just to give you an idea, this is a screenshot.
My question is, it says here on the 12th of March, they're going to present, the 5th, they're going to present the map?
This is a huge issue, but it's not our issue right now. We've got a lot of people out here that need to get their stuff taken care of. So if we can just move on and, and talk about that at a later date, perhaps.
Okay, next slide. And just to remind everybody, there's a new system for voting, the presidential. And just to remind everybody, there's a new system for voting. The presidential primary election's coming up, March 3rd. So I encourage you to check the city's website to find out new information about dates. There are going to be multiple dates available for voting and also there are new vote center locations. It's not the same old polling places. And then I think I have one more slide. Yes, short-term rentals. We're going to hold a special meeting. Thank you to the Planning Commission for agreeing to this. It's a very important topic in the community. There are five Mondays in March, so we're taking advantage of that. And the commission has agreed to hold a public hearing on that date on short-term rentals. And then, let's see. Just as an FYI, there was no appeal filed on the skate park application. So that was exciting news for that part, that temporary skate park project moving forward. And I think my final announcement, this with a heavy heart. I am going to announce that our associate planner, Jessica Clevinger, is leaving us. She is moving on to another position that is five minutes away from her house. I don't know why. That seems like an important thing, but anyway, we're so grateful for her seven years of service. And we're going to miss her and all her hard work and everything that she's devoted to the city. We're very grateful. And thank you so much, Jessica.
I did a quick one, Bonnie. Just thinking through that Trunkus project versus others that come in front of us. Did the creek proximity to that property influence that decision at all? Okay, so just as far as precedent, this isn't just a straight-up.
That was, I asked the coastal analyst that specifically, like, should we expect this kind of, you know, four or five-page letter on every single beachfront project? And she indicated that the location at the mouth of the creek and some other things were important in that decision.
Thank you.
Okay, so with the voting coming up, from everything we're hearing about Yolanda, she has a good chance of being the write-in candidate for the Democratic presidential candidate. So we're now on the consent calendar. Item 3A is off. Are there other items that you wish to pull? Craig, I thought I heard something from you.
I'd like to pull 3B2 briefly.
I'd like to pull 3B1 briefly.
3B1 and 3B2, and that's pretty much it. Okay, so we're at 3B1.
I don't need a staff report.
This is just minutes, right?
These are the minutes.
What's your question?
My question is, on the first minutes for January 21st, page seven of eight.
Bonnie, you're going to need your, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
On page seven of eight, number four. It's about what we spent a bunch of time on, the seating for the restaurants. And the way I read the minutes, it's a little confusing because we were talking at the time about roping off the outside area so we could count, not roping it off, but drawing a circle around it so we counted it differently than we normally do. And so I think we need, in the first sentence where it says forty percent of any additional restaurant outdoors and defining the add outdoor service area to the perimeter around the outdoor seating area. Because we're not going to do that on the inside. You know, it's just minutes, but I think this is confusing.
Yeah, and I noted that also. And when we talked that one through, Trevor, the discussion was defining, I had it as exterior service area around the exterior service area. So like John is saying.
So under number four, you want to add?
Either outdoor or exterior in front of both service areas and seating area in this first sentence.
Where it says, and defining the service area, it would say, and defining the outdoor service area?
Or exterior, whichever you want to use.
So you don't want to have the service area counted the same way on the inside as you do on the outside?
Well, I didn't know if that was clear, and I don't know what the resolution says. But I thought.
And that's what we talked about in the discussion in real time.
But, you know, I'm fine if it's going to be both service areas or a rope around them. That's fine if that's what you mean.
So it changes to, to say, and defining the outside service area is the exterior perimeter around all of the outside seating area?
Yeah, if that's consistent with what the resolution said.
It's consistent with.
I don't think the resolution specified. And I, my understanding of it was that this was kind of a figurative perimeter around the seating area as opposed to, you know, like having a physical cord around it all that.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
Right. We were just going to make sure that we captured everything without like carving out walkways and ADA access and everything.
But you meant to do that on the inside also.
I figured we would do it the same way.
Okay, then I'm fine with this.
Okay, so then.
Does that solve your problem, Chris?
Actually, the language that we talked through was what I just had Trevor write down with exterior reference in both. So the interior would still be subject to whatever is our definition of service area.
Well, not if that's not what the resolution said, and that's where I was confused.
The resolution wasn't.
It's already been signed. These are just the minutes.
It wasn't specific enough to match to this. This is inconsistent, what's written with the resolution.
Have you read the resolution?
Yeah, twice.
Well, we need a motion here. Chris?
Yeah, I'd move that we add exterior there.
Is it outside or exterior you want to?
Either one, outside is.
So the motion is to add, to add into item four, subsection four, first sentence, to state, and defining the outside service area is exterior perimeter around all of the outside seating area. That's the motion correct?
Correct.
Your motion's there. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm opposed. None. It's unanimous. We have one item because item 3A1 was polled. We missed public comment. Norm, you've got a, you want to speak to 3A1? It was polled, you understand?
I do understand. I do understand and think it was the opportunity to to at least discuss this issue. I think there were a number of things that were not clear and/or not properly presented when this project was heard. And I think that there are some issues that are really important. One of which is if the fourteen piles don't go in, is the person going to be able to occupy the house? Because it doesn't meet the safety requirements. And I think that that's relevant because the whole concept for the twenty piles was so that the person could live in the house. Another point is, I don't think it was clearly understood that the additional fourteen piles, number one, not on a coastal bluff, not subject to wave-up rush, and in fact, would not ever be exposed. You need a geologist to say that. My geologist, the project geologist, has been unavailable as a result of a family illness. So with those things said, I'll work with the staff and see if there's any possibility to relook at this case in the future. I'm not sure why it was continued. But the reason I put my slip in were the reasons I just mentioned to you, and thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Norm. That brings us to 3B2. Which is Craig's?
Yeah, which I pulled. We had some correspondence on this from a neighborhood, from a neighbor. And I just wanted some reassurance from staff. I know some of their concerns were not things that we can address. But the one question that they would want to be clear about is whether the OWTS for this is designed to accommodate thirty-one people per day as is stated in the staff report with the staff and the guests at this place. And there was something in the staff that mentioned, this was something to the effect of a standard residential OWTS. And I just wondered, can we confirm that that will handle thirty-one people per day?
The plot plan that is approved by the City Environmental Health Administrator does acknowledge the number of employees. So the answer is yes.
Anything about how these are designed and whether the same design would accommodate one family versus thirty-one people? So I just wanted some reassurance on behalf of those neighbors.
I think that's what you just said. John?
I did ask that question at the hearing and was told exactly what Bonnie just said. So it was brought up at the hearing.
Okay, so this is a receive and file, is it not? Right. Okay, so that takes us to item 4A, which is continued. Item 4B is next up. 4B, 4B?
4B.
Okay, 4B is a coastal, let me make sure that I've gotten everybody here. 3B2, Clive, you were just here for comments. And, okay, so you're good. All right. 4B is coastal development permit seventeen dash oh seventy-one and a site plan review and application for an interior and exterior remodel. This is the property of 33608 Pacific Coast Highway within the appealable coastal zone. Can we have a staff report, please, before you leave us?
Yes, before I begin though, I'd like to also thank you, Bonnie, for all the opportunities you afforded me over the last seven years. It's been a very educational, challenging, and rewarding experience, but Planning Department works very hard and I'm happy I was a part of that.
Well, you should just know that Vince Bertoni started as a junior planner here in this department and is now heading the Los Angeles City Planning Department. So the future is yours. If you start here in Malibu, you can go.
Don't tell our younger staff that right now. Bonnie needs them.
You should also know that your husband's going to be very lonely.
I've heard so much. Yes, thank you. All right, so for the last one, the next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for 33608 PCH. The subject property is developed with an existing two-story, single-family residence and detached guest house and garage. The parcel is zone rural residential, two acres and is slightly over half an acre in size. The property is located on the south side of PCH between the ocean and an easement that provides access to the subject property and the neighboring properties on either side. The project before you tonight consists of the demolition of fifteen percent of exterior walls of the single-family residence and interior and exterior remodel of a single-family residence, three hundred and sixty-six square feet of additions to the second story, seven hundred and ninety-three square feet of covered decks to the first floor, and it includes a site plan review for construction over eighteen feet. According to the LA County Assessor records, the existing two-story residence was constructed in nineteen fifty-five. Since that time, the property has received several approvals, one from the California Coastal Commission for the detached guest house and garage. More recently, in two thousand and thirteen, the city of Malibu approved a CDP for an interior and exterior remodel of the existing single-family residence and guest house and a new swimming pool. The property is nonconforming with regards to the guest house and garage projecting seaward of the building's string line. The subject application, however, does not propose any work on the existing guest house or the garage and complies with the existing remodel policy as it proposes less than fifty percent demolition of exterior walls. Fifteen percent, to be exact, for this application. The proposed additions and covered porches are sited landward of the existing structure and the application has been reviewed by the California State Lands Commission and determined not to intrude on sovereign lands. This slide shows the location of the proposed additions. The seven hundred and ninety-three square feet of covered decks proposed on the first story are shown in blue in the top image and the three hundred and sixty-six square feet of additions to the second story are shown in red on the bottom. The floor plan and section show the location of the proposed second-story additions along with their proposed heights. As stated in the staff report, the proposed additions are not expected to impact blue water views from neighboring properties as the views from the properties along PCH project over the roof line of the existing single-family residence and the views from the properties on either side are blocked by mature existing landscaping. The applicant has provided two different exhibits that demonstrate that the proposed additions comply with the two-thirds rule. The exhibit on the left shows the portions of the residence that consist of the first floor in pink and the second floor in green. The exhibit on the right shows the portions of the residence that are over eighteen feet in height in blue. The LIP states that when calculating two-thirds, any portion of a structure above eighteen feet in height shall be, shall not exceed two-thirds of the first floor area. In addition, I understand that there were some additional questions with regards to the covered porches that extend more than six feet from the structure and how they relate to TDSF and the two-thirds rule. It has been the policy in the Planning Department since two thousand and eight to include covered areas that extend more than six feet from a structure in the TDSF calculation. It has also been the policy since two thousand and eight to include the volume of those covered areas when calculating the two-thirds rule. Story poles were erected in October of twenty nineteen. And the story pole photographs here show the poles along the northern edge of the residence. The photographs also show the steep topography between the existing development and the properties to the north. These photographs show the proposed additions along the eastern side of the property. And again, you can see that these, you can see the relationship between the poles and the existing mature tree canopy. In summary, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2011, approving the project as conditioned. This concludes my presentation and the applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Ex parte communication disclosures. Chris, start with you.
None.
John?
I did talk to Richard this morning about, oh, I talked to him about the fact, I was trying to understand the fact that this was approved by the Planning Commission, I mean, by the Coastal Commission, as a two-story building with the same as a box, basically. And whether or not the two-thirds rule existed in nineteen ninety-eight. And I was hoping to have him clear that up tonight. I did not get an answer.
Craig?
Yeah, I visited this site with Steve once. The applicant wasn't there. We subsequently met with them on another day. When we were on the site, I observed that the riprap wall is sloped approximately one-to-one, as would be the angle of repose of riprap. That's not counted in slope calculations. I observed that it's approximately ten feet high by standing next to it. Since we were given assessor numbers for the neighbor's habitable area, I looked up one, I looked up this one thinking it would make a favorable comparison for the applicant. But I found that the assessed square footage is five thousand thirty-three, which is substantially higher than the current existing four thousand two thirty-one TDSF and three thousand eight hundred and eighty living area. So that's kind of an odd question. I don't know if it's relevant, but it is something I learned. We met with the applicant. We determined, discovered that they're relying on TDSF in the formulation of the two-thirds rule. And I have a little demonstration here when we get to talk about the two-thirds rule. I learned that they didn't factor the riprap slope into the lot area calculation, which could be relevant because if indeed it is one-to-one or steeper, that would require measurement to settle the issue. And given that the proposal is five square feet shy of the max TDSF, that could actually make a difference. That's my disclosure.
Steve?
Here, microphone?
We met at the site and we met in Doug Burge's office with the architect who was designing the project. And the meeting in the office was primarily to discuss some of the questions that came up after our site visit. And Craig figured out the fifty-three hundred square feet or whatever it was from the assessor's office. And I brought up the issue of the two-thirds rule, how it was being applied and tried to get the, and did get the architect to explain how they did it. Basically, we were told there were two different computations they got from the city. Two different staff people gave them two different methods of computing that. And as best as I could tell, both of them were wrong. But we'll go through that when we get into the project.
I have one more, sorry. I had got a message from a neighbor who was concerned about the increased bulk.
I talked to Richard when this matter was before us, before, the last time. And other than that, there was nothing that wasn't in the staff report. other than that, there was nothing that wasn't in the staff report. All right, so we have the applicant, Doug, and Joseph Resema. You've got fifteen minutes. Go.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this project. I might have mentioned this before, a couple of weeks ago when we were here. This is actually our second round on this project. We had gone, done a remodel on this project, really interior remodeling only, no additions with the previous client about five years ago, and there were a number of determinations made at the time to work with the Coastal Commission, verify that the seawall itself actually had a permit, which would then allow us to do that. But we still knew that, at that time, that the seawall itself represented a home, and it's an interesting home, because it's a TDSF-related home. Most homes that you consider on the beachfront might be considered unlimited square footage, but this particular property had a limit on the square footage. The thing that needs to be interested or need to be clarified is that we made it very clear on the second go around with this new client, and again, they appreciated the style, they loved the location, but they wanted to redirect the type of bedrooms that they had, knowing that they wouldn't be able to or nor would they want to change the septic system. So changing the septic system was out of the picture, and the second thing was, is that we knew from the very beginning, like if you applied for an additional square footage, primarily living area on the first floor, that because of the location of that, that we would be not allowed to because of the sea level rise. So we had actually contracted David Weiss's office, and we had determined that, yes, there would probably be, even if it was only about a foot higher, it still would not allow us to add any livable square footage to the house, and that's a separate issue, because it's really talking about wave uprush, just talking about sea level rise, talking about all these things. So we said, any addition that we need to do in this house has to be on the second floor, and it's been cleared up, and Joseph can comment on one of the things from Janelle, who works at David Weiss's office, of where they would make that determination. But regardless, about ten feet above the ground, as it currently stays right now, is the second floor, and that's where the only addition they would allow in the house. The other thing, a very important point, is how do you determine a size and bulk of a house? Now, when we meet with a client, there's three parts that make a ground floor of a house, or any parts of a house, and they are considered the entire floor area, not interior floor area, floor area, and that consists of a garage typically on the ground floor, consists of living area, which is conditioned space, and it's considered any porch is over six feet deep, determine that massing. Now, a client can have a big porch, he can fill it in and make a livable space. He doesn't have to. If it's over six feet, that's the way the rules have been. That's the way they've been applied to every project as far as I've been working in this city, which has been a long time. So if we're gonna start tearing apart this code section that we need to look at, every project's been passed here for the last fifteen or twenty years, because this is the way it's applied. You apply that massing, and a client to decide, if you don't want covered porch over six feet, you can enclose the whole thing. So in this case, we couldn't, so we didn't, so we left them the porches. You then take that number, times the type two-thirds, to come up with your point-six-seven, point-six-six, however you want to do it, to get to the two-thirds rule, and that's the way it's been. That's the way it's set up. We're not making anything up. We've been working on this for many, many years, and every other architect that comes through here, they're doing it the same way. Besides the fact that this particular project, we've had three separate planners over almost three years into this June that we've been working on this project. So we didn't have just one planner look at it. Bonnie's been here the whole time. She knows all the planners. Carlson looked at it. Now Jessica's looked at it. So we have very competent planners. Bonnie's here every single time. Never been an issue. The square footage, the TDSF, nothing. Everything about this project has never been an issue. There's no issues with this project. Now, we can pick, and we can move, and we can do different things, and then we start talking about seawalls. Okay, I lived on this beach about two months ago. I rented a house. I would go by there sometimes, and there was like one foot between the sand and where their level grass is. Sometimes, to Craig's point, it's ten feet. It's a sea level rise. The ocean goes up and down. Yes, there's a sea level there, a seawall, a rock revetment wall. Joseph has a document from David Weiss that says that he determined that this wall, as an average, is one and a half to one, less than one-to-one, because it could be one-to-one, but tomorrow could be maybe flat, and the next day it could be something else. So there's no way that you can determine this. It's just as much on a, how do you determine the assessor number? It's like, we were made to pick a point in time when we started this project, use the assessor date, a survey that the surveyor land and air had to go back, because there was such a time lapse between when we first submitted to when we got it now, to create a survey back to the time to have as a base point, which we created. We used that as the number, because the main high tide line, it's funny, because you're talking about property size, that creates the land that you have to then use the TDSF, subtracting the one-to-one slopes and easements. So all these computations have been looked at, ignazian, by, again, three separate planners in the city, all agreeing in the same course. Now, if we're gonna challenge these things that have been done by the city over two and a half years, we have a much bigger picture and a longer meeting that we can get into. But we feel the property complies. Yes, it may be closer than the square footage. We're not talking about a ten-thousand-square-foot house. We're talking about a small house, no addition to the guest house and the garage, an owner that wants to keep the same number of bedrooms, the same number of occupants. This isn't gonna be a rehab. It's not thirty-five people live in there. It's just a home for a homeowner, and they've been waiting a long time, and they feel by right that they have to build this house. It's modest, not blocking anybody's views. The additions are modest, set back, nothing on the beach side, no additions, no increase in height, so the birds are loving it, the neighbors should love it, and we think it's a great project. Anything else on questions? I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. You have eight minutes and forty-one seconds left. Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to be heard on this project? Norm?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. I'll put in a speaker slip. Doug's a hundred percent correct on everything he said. You really can't change the rules at this point when you spend three years relying upon rules that have been in place for the last twenty years. I know this project very well. It doesn't block anyone's views at all. I was involved in the property above it. I'm involved in two parcels, all three parcels that are above it. We have no objections whatsoever to this house, and if there's a goal here to change the way the total development square footage structural size chart is analyzed and how they're going to do it, it shouldn't fall upon the shoulders of this particular project, and it's going to take a long, long time to start saying... One of my clients has a cabana. Okay, it was included in the total development square footage. It's just a ceiling, no sides at all, and we had to include it in the total development square footage structural size chart, the ability to build it at all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Norm. All right, with no other speakers, we're back at the commission table. Who would like to start?
Chair Jennings, if you would indulge me, I would like to kind of talk through a couple of different points on this, just to clarify some things before we get into the discussion.
Okay, Bonnie.
Parker, could you put up the... I think it says TDSF presentation, and if it's not that one, then it'll be the other one. Yes, okay. I know there's been... Well, before we get into this, I wanted to just address the comment about the revetment being considered a slope of one-to-one that needs to be deducted from lot size. The revetment in this case is a permitted shoreline protection device. It's not part of the lot area that should be deducted in order to determine total development square footage. We've never done that. We've never had to... It's just never come up. This would be the first time anybody's ever raised... Total development square footage doesn't come up in the context of a shoreline protection device very often, but I just wanted to say that we've just never done that. We've never deducted a revetment area from the lot area in terms of determining total development square footage. As far as whether covered porches should be considered as part of the TDSF, this is, as Doug mentioned, something that's been planning practice for many, many years. It was addressed as part of a planning director interpretation at one point. So the history is that total covered porches were always included in TDSF, and then when CJ N. Strupp was the planning manager in two thousand and seven, for a period of time, there was an interpretation that was reviewed with the races that called for excluding that, and part of the reason was based on some of the wording here that is a little bit confusing that mentions, not on this slide, but on the next one, mentions the term floor area. It appears to mention the term floor area in the description of how you calculate the two-thirds rule. I'll get into that in a second. The interpretation was in place to allow unlimited covered porches and not included in total development square footage for about a year. Then it was reviewed again with the races, and it was determined that interpretation should be retracted. That happened in two thousand and eight, and since two thousand and eight, covered areas of six feet or bigger have always been included in total development square footage. That's just existing practice.
Okay, and... Just let her finish. I thought she was done, sorry.
Okay, so Parker, can you go to the next slide? So, and then on this slide, so the definition of total development square footage includes measuring to the exterior of interior walls. That's part of the definition. Floor area, the definition measures to the... only to the interior of exterior walls. So that's part of the problem with reading this section that gets into the multi-story floor area. That's item number two here, where it says height, let's see, "Any portion of the structure above eighteen feet in height shall not exceed two-thirds the first floor area." It's talking about first floor, not floor area, first floor, because it's a difference between the first floor and the second floor. And then the next slide, I believe, is just... It's just blown up in case that was too small to read. And then the next slide is... These are the interpretations I was telling you about that were adopted in two thousand and seven, then retracted in two thousand and eight, and then the next slide gets into the rationale about the six feet and bigger that eventually is gonna be codified if we can ever get done with things like accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals and all that other stuff. So I mainly included this text here in case we wanted to refer to it as part of this discussion, but I wanted to walk through the history of how we've kind of included covered porches and not included it for a brief time, and then for the last twelve years have been including it, and that's the end of my comments.
Just a quick clarification. You had said the exterior of an interior wall. I think you meant exterior of exterior walls?
The... Well, we can flip back to the definition, but yeah, you're supposed to... For TDSF, you go all the way out to the exterior of the wall, and for a floor area, it's only concerned with the inside dimensions.
All right, and Jeff?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah.
And just, I've got no problem with TDSF. TDSF never entered into any conversation I had with anybody, and no question about TDSF. Never there, okay? However, take a look at, if you go to the site plans, there were two TDSF computations that were done. One was T-one dot five A, and the other one was T dot one dot five B, okay? And in our conversations with the architect, basically what happened, and Doug was correct, Stephanie... One of the Stephanies was the original project manager on this, and went to Carlos, and TD, T-one dot five A was the two-thirds computation that Carlos gave us, and what he did, he used the Malibu Municipal Code definition versus the LIP definition that you mentioned a little bit earlier, and the Malibu Municipal Code definition says, "The second floor area plus the area of vaulted ceilings above eighteen feet in height shall not exceed two-thirds of the first floor area," okay? And that's what Carlos did. So his basically tried to adopt to that one. Then if you go to the next one, okay, TD, T dot one dot four five B, that uses the LIP definition. So there, they only take a look at the square footage over eighteen feet, and you get a different definition of what the two-thirds area should be, right? So we got two different computations from staff, and I think that can maybe confuse the architect a little bit, but whatever, okay? And here's what happened. When I went and looked at the site, I came back and looked at these decks, and I said, geez, you know what they're doing? They're building these decks so they can do a two-thirds computation, and that forced me to go back in and read the code, and the code says it's not TDSF this computed, it's floor area. It's based upon the first floor area, not the total... There's not a word about TDSF anywhere in the definition of the two-thirds rule, okay? I'm just... That's the language.
I...
And that was... And when I mentioned it to the architect, she agreed with me. She said, you know, there's a difference between TDSF and floor area, and she said, we have been computing it based on TDSF for a long time, right? What they've done. She said she'd worked for Doug for twenty years, but I don't believe it's correct.
If I can try to clarify some of that. If you're just looking at the definition of the two-thirds rule, there's no reference to TDSF at all. It's only floor area. The floor area definition in the LIP does not include any of those covered areas, and in fact, excludes things like garages and other spaces. I wanted to just do sort of a visual thing to describe what's going on here for anybody who's not really following or understanding. The two-thirds rule, maybe, yeah, okay, we can see that on the screen, basically says the second story can be two times the first, sorry, so that's basically five little unit blocks. Now, the current house is basically a box. The second and first floor are approximately the same size. One's twelve... The first floor is twelve ninety-one, the second floor is twelve fifty-six, so almost the same size, and they want to add a total of eleven fifty-nine, almost that much, to the second floor, and partly in interior space and partly outdoor decks. I don't have a block that shows both interior and exterior, but they're basically trying to put that block on there, so they're really turning the two-thirds rule upside down, and that just, you know, doesn't add up. So intuitively, this goes against the whole intent of the two-thirds rule. Why do we have it in the first place? And it's easy then for me to look at the code and say, I don't know what this history is about using TDSF. The code doesn't mention TDSF anywhere in there. It just says floor area, and the floor area definition doesn't include those overhang porch areas, so it seems really clear-cut to me.
The other issue is that floor area is a commercial... It just applies to commercial development. The definition of floor area talks about vehicle maneuvering space and all that stuff. It's never been used in the context of residential...
Well, it says it doesn't include vehicle maneuvering space, and some other things it doesn't include, but it doesn't... I mean, if we're looking at just the LIP definition of the two-thirds rule, and we're looking to interpret that somehow, this definition of floor area is the only thing we have to go on.
It's... That's just... It's... I'm telling you that it's not ever been interpreted that way. This would be the very first time it's ever been interpreted that way.
And that may be the case. I mean, that was the argument we got from the architect. Is there like, if all your friends drop off the cliff, you're gonna go after them, or you're gonna do it right, all right?
This is right. This is... It's unfortunate wording that's in the code, but it's talking about first floor and the area of the first floor. It doesn't make any sense.
The city also has an obligation to treat similar applicants the same. If we've been consistently interpreting this in one way, then they change it.
Well, but when you look at this...
Our job, when I started, they told me my job was to make sure we interpreted the code and applied it correctly. That's what I was told I was supposed to do, and that's what I'm trying to do, all right? Now, the fact that we made mistakes in the past, look, you know, that's a pretty good deal, because what I'm gonna do then, if I'm an architect, I'm gonna go to a brand-new staff member. I'm gonna ask them to give me a... I'm going to ask them to give me a determination based upon something I want that may be incorrect. And then, I'm going to come back to you guys and say, well, look, I got this stuff from staff who said he was where he's supposed to be, and we can't do that. The code is the, if the code's not the code, then tell me what we're supposed to be following.
Well, you're talking about your interpretation of the code, and that's interpretation is being different than what has been consistently been interpreted here in the past. That's what Bobby's pointing out.
Okay, but it-
Excuse me, John?
Let me ask you, did you say the code was never codified?
The six-feet part has not been put in the code.
Okay, so, we're not interpreting the code.
Yes, we are. We've been, we've been using this interpretation since 2008.
But it's not in the code, you just interpret it.
It's been applied this way since 2008.
Okay, I cannot-
And if there's, if, if you have a concern about, like, the proportions of the house and that sort of thing, that's, that's a different matter as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm mostly concerned with the idea of, of not including covered porches for the first time in twelve years.
Well, let me ask you this. I've been on the planning commission for twelve years, and I don't ever remember a single house coming to us where somebody built a deck so they could have a different way of doing the two-thirds rule. Do you remember anyone's-
It's absolutely happened.
It has happened?
Yes.
Okay, now, what would happen if they tore the deck down? Does the house now have to be torn down?
That's, I mean, if, it, it's like anything else. If you are meeting the code and your plans in a particular way, and then after your final inspection, you go and change the plans without approvals, then, yeah, that's a problem.
Okay. Now, the question I asked Richard today is, is sort of in the same mode. How did we end up with a cube for a house in 1997? How did that get permitted? Is that an interpretation, or what?
I don't know if we can answer that. I don't know if we have all that information available, but the two-thirds rule, as far as I know, it definitely predates the LCP. I don't know if it goes back to the original municipal code in 1991, the interim zoning ordinance and all that stuff. So, I, I'm not sure exactly when it came into being, but it definitely predates the LCP in 2002.
Okay, so, getting into this, what I would, after listening to them, I would consider this gaming the system to get a two-thirds rule, throw a porch on something. Could it be that that house was approved to be bigger, and they just didn't build the, the bigger, the bottom floor? Do you know, do we know what the, the EDP in 97 allowed? And that seems-
We have a former planning director here, as it happens. I don't know if he wants to comment on this. I'm not really asking you to unless you just want to, but I, I don't know the date that two-thirds came into play.
I don't know if I can answer this question, but this is just speculation on, on my part, that maybe that structure was looked at as being a beachfront structure at that time.
No, I know that's not true. I got in there and made sure that didn't happen.
That could be the only thing I could think of, is two-thirds doesn't apply to beachfront.
No, that was changed a long time ago. Okay.
I might be able to move this forward.
Well, let me just ask-
I, I have a quick observation. I just want to call out something in the LIP that might help this. If you take a look at the definitions we're, we're focused on, we're looking at gross floor area, right? Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Floor area.
Floor, floor area.
It's floor area gross, that's the only definition there is.
Yeah, in, in, in terms of the specific section of the code, just to make sure we're on the same page, there's a call-out for gross floor area on page eleven of the LIP. And that's what I think the reference was to. If you also look, there's another reference to habitable floor area or living area. And then, that definition is also kind of loose. But if you look at that definition of living area, that one calls out interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, including basements and attics, not including garage accessory structures. So, if you look at that and apply this, you know, there's still ambiguity on what the six-foot should be included or not. But if it's considered habitable, then it looks like we've got the definition of-
Just to comment on that, to comment on that, obviously, we don't count basements in, you know, we have a whole different deal for that. The definition in the LIP is the sum of the gross horizontal area of the, of the several floors of a building measured from the interior face of the exterior wall or from the center line of the wall separating two buildings, but not including interior parking spaces, loading spaces, maneuvering areas, or ceilings under six and a half feet.
That's, that, that language is part of that PowerPoint I had. If you want to refer to it, Parker can put it on the screen.
Well, I know, but it's in, it's, it's a very, it's section two of the LIP. So, to get back to questions, though, on other things, do we know where this 5,000 square, 5,300 square feet came from?
I can't be exact on that, but we have seen, especially since the Woolsey fire, how sizes of houses and stuff differ from what the, the assessed value or the assessed size is. We have a lot of instances where houses are bigger for some reason, or they're dramatically less. There's some cases where they're vacant lots, and the assessor data says that there's a 10,000-square-foot house there. So, it's hard to say exactly what the reasoning is. We do do measurements differently than the assessor does as well, so I would be guessing on my part, too.
Yeah, it'd be hard for me to believe that somebody would pay property taxes on a house twice the size it is.
Since, since the two-thirds rule is essentially an aesthetic rule, where is this house viewed from? Where?
The house is at the very end of a long flag lot. I don't want to make Parker keep putting slides up. There's a, okay, he's doing it. It's a long flag lot that comes off PCH on the west side. There's three, three lots, I think one of them's vacant above it. The topography of those lots, right off of PCH, is elevated such that once the house gets built there, and I think Norm was discussing that, those views are going to be well over the top of this house. There are a few other neighboring properties down below, and they're all within that same realm with the topography over the top. And there's existing vegetation that's many, many, many years old.
That beach goes quite a ways.
So, let me, let me, let my, have my two cents here. We have a problem that extends beyond this project. We're, we're at a point where this commission routinely overturns staff recommendations. Staff recommendations are based upon, upon the practices the city has engaged in for, for years and years. The result of that is that architects have no way to talk to clients about what they can or cannot do, because staff can't tell them what they can or cannot do, because the rules are going to be determined by whatever comes out of our heads at any given moment. And I think it's really driven the process to a complete halt. This, this particular interpretation has been going on for many years. If it's a problem, you know, there's the legal principle that, you know, if, if, if a set of rules are interpreted in a particular way over an extended period of time, they become the rules. And, and if there's a change that should be made, the proper people to make that change is not this body. The proper people to make that change are the people who were elected by the voters of this city to make those rules.
Yeah.
And, and so, as a result, I think, just in the interests of allowing the process to go forward, that's where I think that's change ought to be made.
Well, Jeff, for the man-
I don't expect you to agree with me, but maybe you have a motion you'd like to make.
I will get to that, but, you know, look, the guy who thought that twelve-foot walls covered in foliage were part of our code, and, so, you, you can't tell me that I'm, I'm not trying to follow the code as close as I can. Second thing is, the question I have is, what is the responsibility of the architect? I didn't know what the rules for the two-thirds rule were, okay? I looked at the project and said, boy, this looks strange. All right, so let me go look it up, and that's what I did. And then, when you went through the process of, knowing, okay, that we've had staff turnover, okay? And in this case, we've got two different definitions of what the two-thirds rule's supposed to be. You would think, having had those two different definitions, the architect would have sat back and said, what is the right answer? I would think he's got the ultimate responsibility to do it right.
You've heard your planning director explain, you've heard your planning director explain that this is the way the rules have been applied for a long, long time.
I'm saying, if I read the rules, that's not how the rules read.
That's right, that's right. You don't agree with what the planning director says, which is a basic problem that we're facing.
I agree with what the rules say.
The public hearing is, is over, Doug, but, but-
I don't have any timeline?
I'm sorry?
No timeline?
Oh, you-
Oh, I'm sorry, you do have time left, but the, no, you-
You closed the public hearing.
Because the public hearing was closed when there was no, no further discussion.
I can move this forward.
Yeah, Craig?
Okay, so, just to finish up that discussion, we're starting with a box and a common sense view of, you know, if adding only to the top like that, that's, that's just counterintuitive. And as to where this is seen from aesthetically, it's seen from the public beach. But moving it forward, this is a site plan review. And that's why we were given a chart of the ten nearby residences and their habitable, habitable area. This project is going for 5,390 square feet, TDSF, understanding that's different than habitable area. But when looking at the, the ten nearby properties, the mean of those ten is 2971. The average is 3716. The existing house is 4231, already bigger than the average and substantially bigger than the mean of 2791. And in fact, the two adjacent houses that would arguably be the most affected by this, when you add them together, they are 5,310, which is, so the two of them together is actually still smaller than what they're proposing. So, just from the, when, when you're looking at this big box here, and you're adding more on the top there, that gets to, to me what looks like a site plan review, that they're just literally over the top.
And you're moving it forward by giving him a motion, Toby?
And this, but also, let's be clear, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, the house itself is 2913.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, the entire square footage of 5,390 includes the detached guest house and garage. So, I, that's, it's apples and oranges if you're just talking about-
But the other places don't have guest houses either, so.
Again, Commissioner Hill, with the assessor information that's provided in those tables, that square footage of the habitable areas, and it doesn't call out garages or sheds or anything else. So, that's, that's not an accurate comparison.
Well, then, we shouldn't be including the non-habitable areas as part of our two-thirds calculation either. That would be apples and oranges, too.
You have a motion to give me?
Just, you know, when I left Doug's office, okay, I thought, this, this is, this is bad. I mean, we're, this is not fair. He's got definitions from the city staff that they've followed, okay? They've worked on this thing, they've been through how, how many planners. And I said, geez, if somebody can give me, now, I'm not going to back off from what the code says, but if somebody can give me a good reason why we should allow them to do this, I'm happy to listen to that, all right? But I haven't heard, all I've heard is, you're wrong. I don't think I'm wrong.
That's where I'm coming in for that, Steve, because when, when I, listening to the conversation, just kind of seeing the pieces, how they fit together, floor area is the question. And so, gross floor, floor area kind of gross, the one, the definition we've been reading, this doesn't work. But if you look at that livable area, that definition that's also in the LIP, if habitable is included as something with more than a six-foot ceiling, this all works.
No, it doesn't.
But, no, it doesn't, it doesn't say six-foot ceiling there.
Here, the reason why, the reason why is that you guys are assuming that this was put together by a team of mathemati, mathematicians. This, this zoning ordinance has been a problem from the very beginning. The LIP was written by English majors. There, there is not a lot of precision in, 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 in any of these documents. And over the years, staff has had to apply interpretations of how they're going to get through projects, one way or another. What's the rule going to be? And it's just very imprecise. Now, you can come along and say, well, look at this, look at this. Okay, fine, but there is a value to having certainty and predictability and not having people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars until they get down here to find out that, oh, no, hey, I don't think this rule is applied that way.
Did I make a comment?
They're not able to wait to get down here to find out. How come, look, I've got planners, I've got trained planners, I've got architects. How come we're reading the code? I've just, you know?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's, yeah. Can we get a motion?
I'd like to make a comment, then I'll make a motion.
All right.
Okay. When you tell us that we should listen to staff, and they're always right, in, in, for example, the remodel rule, the staff was interpreting that you could build a, a wall outside of a wall, and it didn't change the wall. You know, they, when they figured out it was wrong, they changed their interpretation. But they had done houses that were wrong.
We went through a process in order to do that.
Okay, so we went through a process. In this case, what we have is, somebody has a square box, and they want to make the top of the box bigger, so they threw a deck on it, okay? That isn't in the spirit of the law, and I, I also don't think that this idea, we as a planning commission, we are charged with reviewing this stuff, and we're bad guys because we don't always agree with staff. So, I'm going to make a motion that'll solve it all, exactly what you wanted. I move we decline the project and let the city council do their job, as you say. They're the ones that's supposed to interpret.
Okay, that's your motion to deny the project?
I would second it with some rationale for that. One, being the two-thirds rule. Two, being neighborhood character and the site plan review, that this is over twice as big as the two neighboring sites. Three, being, we haven't even talked about this, but the wave-up rush study is based on a four-foot wave with a two-foot sea-level rise assumption, neither of which seems plausible. And I don't know that we need to get into that. If we do, we could leave this out, I suppose, but basically, the site plan review and the two-thirds rule are the key things.
You incorporate that?
I'll, I'll accept that.
You accept that, and that is, that's moved and seconded. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I still want to have a little, I still want to understand the position that Commissioner Euring and Hill have. I'm, I'm still seeing, I mean, I understand the, the concern that by adding effectively an unenclosed deck, and we're including that in livable space downstairs, is the position that the applicant is taking.
Including it as floor area.
No?
They're including it in floor area.
No, there's nothing in the definition that says it's, it's interior.
It's the lower-level mass is what the, is what staff is looking at and has been looking at.
This is what they're doing. That's not interior on the bottom.
Right, but, but, okay, but just step back for a sec. They're adding a covered porch on the lower level, correct?
Is that bulk and mass, or is that roof?
That's habitable space, is what I'm-
No, it is not habitable, it's outside.
Okay, but that's, is, is that staff's argument, position, I should say, on this?
Our position is that covered areas deeper than six feet for the last twelve years have been counted towards total, total development square footage. And total development square footage is the metric we use to get compliance, determine compliance with the two-thirds rule.
Okay, and your position is that, no, it's floor area?
When I look at the definition, TDSF does not appear anywhere in the two-thirds rule.
It's all in the same section of structure size under a giant paragraph about total development square footage.
But in your, in your read, you're saying it's floor area, so not TDSF, and you're saying gross floor area, that strict definition? As far as, like, excluding, you know, only including blah, blah, blah.
And to go higher, bigger than that, in, in theory, the two-thirds rule has to do with bulk and mass. And a porch doesn't add mass.
Well, it, my read is that I'm, I'm going towards a third interpretation, which is saying that you've got habitable floor area, and this, this would be the controversy. That's considered to be living area, which is interior habitable area. So, I think my argument would be on this one, is that it's covered, roof more than six feet, looks pretty habitable to me.
You can't live outside of the habitable area.
Well, looking at how this place is designed, they've got a lot of enclosures. They pull around these habitable areas.
The deck is totally unenclosed.
That, that's how I'm interpreting this, though. And so, it's, it's, it's kind of in between the two, but I don't see this as necessarily just a gross floor area type of a-
But, but Chris, they expressly said they can't add-
We've got a motion, and we've got a second on it. And if there's any further discussion that's on a typical point or a point that hasn't been addressed, let's do that. But otherwise, I think we've, we've heard from-
Just to follow Chris's point, they just made the point that they can't do anything more on the ground floor because of the sea-level uprush, yada, yada, yada. So, you can't be adding extra space on the ground floor that way either.
Yeah, I know, it's creative, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second.
Chair Jennings, can I clarify that the commission per its previous direction
Chair Jennings, can I clarify that the Commission per its previous direction wants this motion to be brought back? Brought back and memorialized for final approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the motion is to deny the project based on failure to comply with the 2/3 rule, inability to make the neighborhood character finding required for the site plan review based on the size of the house, and that the wave uprush study was implausible?
That's what I would say, but I don't know.
Well, I don't think.
Is that part of your motion?
Well, I would use the words.
Did you have any basis for why it was implausible?
I would use the words inappropriately calculated.
We just need to know what you want us to put in the, because we'll have to put findings in here. And so, we want to know a little bit more about what about the wave uprush study was inaccurate and does everybody agree with that?
Well, it says it's based on a four-foot wave, and, you know, we get that every couple of weeks. And we get a 10-foot wave every year or so, or every year or two, anyway.
Okay, look, it's 8 o'clock, we've got a lot more to do. And if you really want to include this item, I suppose we can do it. But really, there needs to be technical evidence.
Right, which is why I said, I think we can hang our hat on the prior stuff.
Okay.
Can I clarify, then it would only be, the denial would be only based on failure to comply with the 2/3 rule, and also an inability to make the neighborhood character finding required by the site plan review due to the size of the house? Does that accurately reflect the motion?
John?
Yes.
The seconder?
I'll second.
All happy?
And that's to return with a motion memorializing this decision.
Right. Catherine?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
No.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Motion carries.
Hope the members of the city council are watching. Okay, that takes us to 4C.
Bye, Jessica.
Bye, Jessica. 4C is coastal development permit number 13-054, a lot line adjustment, and a demolition permit, and a bunch of other stuff. This is at 3469 and 3441 Cross Creek Road. It's agenda item 4C. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. What you have before you this evening is an application for a lot line adjustment, as well as the demolition of an existing structure and the construction of a new structure. The lots that are the subject of this application are located as part of Sarah Retreat with a lot that does abut towards the Malibu Knolls area. However, the lot that abuts the Malibu Knolls area is not subject to the Malibu Knolls overlay district. So, these do follow our general zoning guidelines. The applicant is proposing the demolition of roughly an 1,800-square-foot single-story structure. There was an addition that was added without the benefit of permits to that structure that'll also be removed. Then, in its place, a new 5,000-square-foot singles-family residence would be constructed with the inclusion of a basement. The application includes a lot line adjustment, as we discussed, and also a habitat restoration because of the riparian buffer and riparian escha that is located directly to the east of the property. The project also includes the following discretionary reviews. There are two variances included with this application. One variance is for the elimination of the requirement of enclosed parking. The applicant has proposed four unenclosed parking spaces. Those spaces have been reviewed to be determined that they also, they meet with the size requirements, as well as they are located outside of the required fire department turnarounds. The second variance is for a reduction in the required esha buffer due to fuel modification. Given the property's proximity to the riparian habitat, it is not possible to meet the required separation, which would total 300 feet. It would be 200 feet for the fuel modification, and also 100 feet for the buffer. So, that's why we say 300. However, that is the rule of the local coastal program. The applicant is complying with that, so that's why they apply for the variance. But also, they worked with the fire department to obtain a revised fuel modification plan, and their fire expert is here this evening to explain the history of fires through that area and why this will work. In addition, there are two site plan reviews. One to allow for the construction of a 28-foot-tall pitched roof. In this particular application, it is a single-story home. However, it has a vaulted ceiling space, and so there is a site plan review for that. And also, the staff did check to see that the vaulted ceiling space complies with the 2/3 calculation, should that in the future be enclosed. Or a floor added. There's also a site plan review for construction on slopes that are steeper than 3:1, but flatter than 2 1/2 to 1. And the reason for that is that the existing structure is kind of sunk into the hillside there. It's a manufactured slope. The code does not give any credit for manufactured slopes, so we are treating it as any other slope. And as a result, since there is a little bit of excavation in that area, a site plan review has been included. What you have here is a diagram of the two lots. The red line that you see in the middle is the lot line as it exists today. The blue line shows the proposed lot line. Currently on the lot that has the, that has the structure that's in question tonight that will be demolished, that lot has that structure, a tennis pavilion, a couple guardhouses, a barn, a main residence, and then also a guest house with garage. All of that exists on the one property there to the east. The other property to the west only has some minor agricultural development on it. And there is also a fire department access road that continues from, it's an extension of the property that has single-family homes. That property, as it stands today, is a vacant property that could be developed. If a home were to be developed on that property, they'd be allowed to have up to a 10,000-square-foot development area. You're most likely looking at development that's on steep slopes. It would be some hillside development, and also, it would definitely result in esha disturbance. What the applicant is planning to do is shift the lot line over so that now the new proposed development would constitute the single-family home for the lot that would be the eastern lot there adjacent to the creek. And the existing single-family home and its existing development, tennis pavilion, guest house, barn, and guard shacks, that would now be located as part of the lot that is currently undeveloped. What that does effectively is prevent any future development on that lot because of the esha requirements, the 10,000-square-foot development area allowed on that lot has now been occupied. It's going to be the development that is now existing on that lot. There was some concern expressed by the commission of the future potential of subdividing that lot. The applicant has done some additional studies to show why that would be inconsistent with the city's zoning ordinances and coastal program. In addition, with discussions from our city biologist, he indicated that future subdivision of that lot would not be possible because it would result now in two disturbance areas, two 10,000-square-foot disturbance areas. That would be inconsistent with Chapter 4 of the LIP. Nevertheless, the applicant would be willing to allow for and accept a condition on the project's resolution that would identify that lot as, you know, the address of the lot, Cross Creek 3441, would not be eligible for any future subdivisions. The applicant is willing to agree to that. In addition, one of the commissioners brought up a question about lot area. The question was whether that it would be acceptable or should be appropriate for staff to include the easement. There's a conservation easement along the eastern portion of the property. At this time, it's staff's opinion of this project, and also consistent with staff city policy, and also, we can discuss this with the city attorney here this evening, that when you look at the definition of lot area specifically in both the LIP and in the city's municipal codes, and how it's been applied in past projects, it is excluding street easements and 1:1 slopes. It does not talk about the exclusion of conservation easements. The concern is raised that once you start piecing together multiple references to lot area from different sections in the code which apply to different items in the code, then it becomes a question of whether or not it should be excluded. However, at this time, staff recommends a lot line adjustment be approved as proposed because it meets the past practices of this city and city council on their various appeals, and it's consistent with the definition of lot area in both Chapter 17 and in Chapter 2. This is a floor plan showing the proposed home. As you can see, it contains roughly two bedrooms and a kitchen. It's a very large layout, large rooms. And as I mentioned, it is only a single floor. The staircase that you see leads to the basement that is below the residence. These are the elevations of the residence. Once again, they are being required to comply with the 2/3 calculations because those are vaulted ceiling heights. This is a site plan showing the proposed development. The application does not include a wastewater treatment system. The existing property has two wastewater treatment systems, and it was confirmed that each of these systems function separately. And also, the lot line adjustment would not result on one wastewater system being placed on one property and having to serve across property lines. Each one will have a complete independent wastewater system on their property. Staff recommends approval of the resolution and adoption of, which we shouldn't say, Resolution Number 1354, should be CDP 1354. The ERB did make a recommendation on this project, and that was to improve Cross Creek Road to Fire Department standards. That is something that the applicant is aware of, but it's something that they could speak to, they're not capable of doing. And I'm sorry, not Fire Department standards, public road standards. And one of the commissioners had mentioned, well, Fire Department standard's 20 feet, but it goes beyond that. In order to go to public road standards, what the applicant would be looking at would be line of sight issues on that road. They would be looking at the quality of the paving, perhaps extended shoulder widths to increase line of sights. There's also the angles of that road as it approaches the home. And the last issue our Public Works folks brought up to my attention with that was also just the design of the curves as well. So, it required to bring that road to public standards as recommended by the fire liaison on the ERB. To do something like that would require a joint project with the investment of all the owners who have a stake in that easement. So, that is why that recommendation by the ERB was not included as part of the conditions of approval for this project. The applicant is available for any questions, as well as staff.
Okay, next party communication disclosure, Steve?
I met with Commissioner Mazza, we met with the applicant, walked the property, didn't learn anything, wasn't in the staff report.
Craig?
I visited the site with Commissioner Marks. We learned there are parts of the meadow area on the eastern parcel do flood. I learned that there's nearly an acre of open space easement. We can discuss something about that as we go, and I guess that's all I learned different.
John?
I met with Steve on the site with Drew Purvis and the architect. I discussed the lot split, restriction on re-subdivision with Drew, and he seemed to agree with it. And that's all I learned.
Chris?
As mentioned, I met with Commissioner Hill and the applicant Drew Purvis and his team. Didn't really learn anything beyond what's in the staff report there.
I had conversations with staff this morning about effect of the lot line adjustment, but nothing that's not already mentioned in the staff report. Okay, Drew? The applicant team is the four of you, is that correct?
It is, that's correct.
You've got 15 minutes.
I'll be the only one speaking under a comment at the beginning here, but the others will be available for questions.
Sure.
From the commission. Drew Purvis with DP Planning and Development, offices in Westlake Village. The staff report highlights a lot of the environmental integrity and merits of this project, but I just wanted to underscore three items that I feel are very important for your consideration for this project. The first item is the fuel modification of this project in relation to the fuel modification that already exists on the property. We are demoing a structure and replacing it in almost the same exact location. And the fuel modification that results from this new structure is predominantly in the same exact location as the fuel modification that currently exists there today. There will only be about 5% additional fuel modification in the esha buffer from what exists there today. The structure is going to be set back further than the existing structure is today from the creek. The existing structure is at 88 feet from the creek, and the new structure will be at least 100 feet from the creek. The closest point will be about 102 feet from the creek. That's all in item number one. Item number two is, and Commissioner Hill brought this up in his disclosure, that he learned, and we talked about this, that there is almost an acre and a half of new proposed native habitat to be proposed within the esha buffer area. The entire 100-foot esha buffer will have native landscaping consistent with the landscaping that exists today within Malibu Creek. There will be sycamore trees, oak trees, and similar grasses that will be pulled into the site. The previous approval, the previous project that was approved of this site, that entire meadow area was Bermuda grass, an irrigated Bermuda grass. So, this will change a non-native element to a total native element. The third item is there is a bioretention area, a very large one, that's almost an acre in size. And that's going to exist on the, in the meadow area as well where the grass was previously approved. And it will be just outside of the esha buffer, 100 to 150 feet away from the creek. And that will treat stormwater that's captured from this project site, but also project sites that are uphill and a street that is uphill from this project site that drains across this project site. And we're going to pull all that stormwater into this bioretention area during storm incidents, and it will be treated there onsite and percolate into the ground rather than going into the creek and out to the ocean. So, I just wanted to highlight those three major elements of environmental aspects of this project. There was some consideration of safety in regard to fire and also flooding when I was meeting with commissioners onsite. And I decided to bring our experts in those two areas to this hearing, and they're here and available to answer any questions the commission may have, and things that I may not have answered while I was onsite completely for your satisfaction. And the one expert is Gene Begnell. He's with Fire Safe Planning Solutions, and he can speak to fire safety and fuel modification. Gene has studied the fire history in this area for the last 100 years, and he prepared a fire behavior report for this project site. Our civil engineer, Gary Nguyen, is our FEMA expert, and he can talk to FEMA flood limits on this property and what type of flooding would occur during a flood incident. And then also, we have the architect here. If you want to ask the architect any questions about the architectural style of the project, and his name is John Mylander. That concludes my presentation at this time, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Drew. We've got 10 minutes and 48 minutes left, but is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address this? And before the commission? I mean, none, you have 10 minutes if you want to speak some more, but otherwise, we'll close the public hearing. Okay? We'll close the public hearing, we're back at the commission table. Who would like to go first? John?
This is for Richard, maybe Drew. I didn't see anything in here, maybe I missed it on fences. And these are obviously over a quarter acre. So, do we have a provision in here on animal permeable fences?
I don't believe, I'll look at the biology referral.
Condition 23 has that, the 23 and 24 are the standard conditions for fencing?
Okay, so, 23 and 24. So how is it fenced now? Drew, do you have to replace the fence, or is there a fence?
We are not proposing to do anything with fencing on this project. There is one fence that was installed for construction purposes, and it's a chain link fence, it's at the 100-foot ESHA buffer line, and that was to keep construction worker parking and other construction materials out of that area.
So in other words, everything else is unfenced unless you want to throw in?
Well, the entire perimeter of the entire property has been fenced for many years, since the 80s, and it's, there's a chain link fence around the entire perimeter of the property.
The fence is 40 years old?
Probably nearly that old, at least from the 1980s when the house was originally built.
Okay, so if you, once you rejiggered the property lines, if you fenced it, you would have to use, follow the rules?
Yeah, we're not proposing any fencing, and if we are, we would propose the fencing that was habitat accessible.
Okay, Steve, wasn't there a fence up on Harbor Vista, is that part of this project?
Not part of the project, and that fence is permeable.
Okay, okay. That's all my questions.
Craig?
I think there's a lot to recommend this in so far as it locks up the property with some development that's a lot less intensive than it could be. That's good, and the ESHA restoration, that's great. There's a lot of good stuff in this, and I'm hoping that we find our way to see it through. I see one big roadblock though that we need to see if we can negotiate our way around, and that is LIP 9.4.0, which states, it's short, I'll quote the whole thing, "Land divisions, including lot line adjustments, shall be prohibited unless all proposed parcels can be demonstrated to be safe from flooding, erosion, geologic, and extreme fire hazards." Now, we have evidence that this floods, there's erosion of the creek bank, arguably extreme fire hazards there right at the boundary of civilization and the wildland interface. So when you break that all down, the key phrase in that is, the parcels would need to be demonstrated to be safe from those hazards. So maybe this is a question for staff, or maybe for Trevor, actually, this would be good for Trevor. How do we look at this and say, this whole project is safe from those obvious apparent onsite hazards?
My understanding is that the interpretation of that section of the code is that, not that every inch has to be free from that, but that you can have development that would be free from that on the site, and that's what's been proposed here, there would be safe sites that would be located on both to prevent the division into one lot that would not be buildable or would have issues, would require to be building in those types of areas.
So the interpretation is that the house and the development portion is safe from those, but even though the whole rule says the parcel is safe from?
That would render lot line adjustments impossible in the city because the entire city is a wildfire hazard area, so you can't read it that narrowly.
Right, and, well, I don't know that this whole city is, there is a designation for it, whatever, ultra-high severe, it's like a five-letter acronym, it doesn't include the word extreme, so it's a different, it's actually a different designation, but notwithstanding that, I don't know, are we comfortable with saying we're safe from? Okay.
If I may, just to add to the city attorney's point, if you read further in that section, section X, it provides a mechanism where is a condition of approval of new development within or adjacent to an area subject to flooding, landslide, or, excuse me, land or mudslide. So what I'm getting at here is, there is a mechanism as part of subsection X to further illustrate the city attorney's point that it's the site of development and not the lot as a whole.
Okay, thank you. We also had some discussion I had with Trevor and with Chris about the lot line adjustment and how you count the net area of it. I think in the end, we could really get into the weeds on that, but it's pretty academic, and the end result is going to be the same. The applicant said, you know, they could tweak the lot line a little bit if need be and to capture another half an acre on the creek side lot. I don't know if that's something you just would want to do, but it's not, I don't think it's essential. Everything stays the same, basically, so it's a difference that makes no difference.
Well, and there's no actual, I don't believe a basis in the code that the resulting lot area is calculated on a net basis. We use net lot area when calculating total development square footage based on the express language in the structure size section of the code, which calls for you to exclude slopes of one-to-one, and then the definition of lot area itself, I believe, talks about excluding street rights away. But as far as excluding an open space easement or anything like that, that's just not required to be excluded.
On this matter, we can agree to disagree, and we don't need to, I have an argument that is good, but it's irrelevant at this point, just to put an asterisk behind it. If I'm, am I understanding right that with respect to the fire hazard and the ESHA setback, we are being asked in effect to grandfather the buffer for a new project? Is that something that's, can we just grandfather on a new project?
We are not asking for it to be grandfathered. What's the reason for the variance? You may wish to, perhaps you could think of it that way, but the applicant, this is new development, and as such, a variance would be required to allow for this structure to be put in relatively the same location. As the applicant mentioned, they are pulling it as far back as possible.
Okay, that's good. And then, we had asked for some sort of exhibit on the parking and the request for the variance to not have enclosed parking for the two spaces. We didn't get any data on that, and so we don't, I don't have a clear sense of whether that's something enjoyed by the majority of the residents nearby or some other measure of the neighbors that would make some kind of common sense. What's the story about? I mean, I guess my concern here is we're right at the wildland interface, and we want to have a home that doesn't burn, and if we're going to have a couple cars in the, or four cars in the driveway, none of which are covered, that's a good way to start the fire right there. So why would we not allow, why would we not require the covered parking?
The basis for that requirement of parking is typically to get cars off the public street and get things in a garage. It's more of a visual and aesthetic, not necessarily a fire-related issue. The Fire Department did review this project, the Fire Department did not indicate that they have any issue with the parking. Their concern when it comes to parking is more of making certain there is access for the purpose of the fire trucks and fire personnel accessing the home. What the applicant is asking for here is the ability to essentially continue doing what they're doing now. If you go to the site now, you'll find there's a large number of vehicles parked outside. And given the size of this property, the surrounding neighborhood, there is no aesthetic concern. Parking will be hundreds of feet from the nearest private road. Staff did look at neighboring properties, and the applicant also did, and they can discuss this too, we attempted to do a field survey, and the reason why we're not here this evening with definitive results is because it's more of a quantitative analysis, or, excuse me, I want to say qualitative. We looked at aerial photos, these are large lots, there's also private streets, so we can't just go in there and start driving around willy-nilly. And what we saw in the aerial photos were a lot of older homes that appeared to have cars parked on the outside, we couldn't find garage doors. The LA County Assessor's information was not a reliable source in this case. We don't have assessor information on these homes like we do for the homes that burned. That was something specific and special that the LA County Assessors gave us. So really, before the planning commission this evening is the question of whether or not they wish to grant the ability for this person to be able to park cars outside, and that really is what it boils down to, and does it affect the aesthetics, or is there the possibility that somehow with the loss of two spaces, it's going to impact street parking? And I don't believe that is the case here, because typically that's what we're looking at, is impacts to neighboring residences.
From my perspective, it's the granting of the variance, and are we, would we be granting something that is not, that would be a privilege not enjoyed by others, or, you know, the language, we don't want to be setting a precedent that we just give variances out like candy as I've heard it described. I wonder, is there any, is there any option to say, well, you don't want the garage right up near the house for whatever reason, could you fit a garage somewhere closer back to the gate? Would that make any sense for your client? I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, there should be some basis for justifying the variance, and we're just being told that we don't have the evidence, so.
We've conducted a field survey and tried to do the best we could at determining how many structures in the area or properties in the area use their garages or park in or out of a garage on their property. And what we have seen is, we've seen a number of, on these larger lots, five-acre and larger lots, I'm not talking about an acre lot or a half acre lot. Generally, the half acre and acre lot, people are actually using their garages ironically. But if you look into these properties that are five acres in size in this vicinity, in this neighborhood, you can see that garages have been converted to art studios or to other things, and people are not parking in those garages anymore. So, and it's not the desire of our client to actually park his cars in a garage and in this location, it hasn't been on this site at all. So we did consider a garage early on in the design, the client chose not to want to have a garage. If we did try to locate a garage, as you suggest, closer to, or somewhere else on the site, that garage in itself would probably need fuel modification, and that would also do further encroachment into the ESHA buffer as well.
Okay, I have one more item, I guess just before I move to it, should we take a straw vote about, am I the only one who would care about the not giving the variance out?
We can do that if you'd like. Steve?
You're happy with no garage?
I hike through Sarah Canyon three days a week, and Drew's correct.
Yeah, okay. So this is not an unjustified variance? Okay.
I've been in three of the four houses between there and the guard gate, and one of them has a garage. The rest of them do not even have garages.
Okay, so that's a no.
So, one other quick, just favorite ask, maybe?
I have one more point then.
But it's all in lines with this. I think, Drew, you'd said that you couldn't build anything more because of the disturbed area, is that correct? Like if we requested that you built a garage, could you even do that? Because...
To build another garage on the site somewhere else on that property, we'd be in non-compliance with many of the developers.
We're already not needing another garage here.
But my point, Craig, is that I would ask that maybe in the staff report, we could add some comments to the effect of being that the applicant is not able to build a garage, you know, because then it's not as much of a variance, just to kind of, as an option.
I would accept that.
Do you have another point?
The final point, on the archeology, we're doing nearly 2,700 cubic yards of digging, of excavation in what is a prime Chumash habitat zone with 10 or a dozen sites within half a mile, and I think we already chatted about this, that the applicant would be fine with putting in a condition requiring a professional monitor during excavation.
Yeah, the applicant would actually agree to that condition, to have a monitor onsite while we were excavating further the structure.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay, just, my only comment is that, going back to my point about how the LIP was written by English majors, the talk about how land divisions, including lot line adjustments, the subdivision map act explicitly excludes lot line adjustments from land divisions, for what it's worth. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project as staff recommends with the addition of a recordation of a prohibition of further splitting lot 3441 Cross Creek Road.
Is that the, is the...
That's the 11-acre lot?
The condition that Richard listed at the beginning?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's 3441 Cross Creek, recorded, non-lot split. And then a condition to provide for a, whatever words we use, professional monitor during excavation.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, is that your motion?
Pardon me, Chair Jennings, if I may, just for clarification on Commissioner Mazza's point, I believe he, if I understood Commissioner Mazza correct, he would like to have a condition stating the prohibition on a lot split, but also that it be recorded, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it would have to be recorded.
And then adding a condition to have an archaeologist present during any excavation?
Correct, and then to bring the item back.
Our cultural resources monitor, archaeologist, which one is it?
I'd prefer a professional archaeologist.
Okay, does that reflect your motion, Commissioner?
And then to bring it back for us to review.
All right.
I do want to kind of call it the obvious if I could.
Just a second, you were speaking to the archaeologist, professional monitor issue?
I am, yeah. I'm just trying to figure out where I can find one of those, but we'll agree to that.
Oh, they have, they come out of the weeds once they know. UCLA.
Yeah, sorry, and Mr. Purvis, I just want to make it clear that the split you're doing puts much, like probably 80% of that smaller lot in FEMA flood plane, and you're aware of that, obviously, correct?
We are.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, fine, moved and seconded, you want to read it back, or are you happy?
It would be staff's recommendation with the following changes. Number one, that the condition that Richard listed about the future lot division would be included, is a condition and also requiring a recordation of the same, and that an archaeologist is present for any excavation, and that the resolution is brought back, is more or less brought back for approval to the planning commission.
Okay. I'll second it. Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to 5A. Oh, yes, this is, 5A is the conditional use permit 19-008, an application for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a new in-store wine tasting area located in the existing retail space at the Malibu Village. This is, the property is located at 3822 Cross Creek Road, Unit 3822. Applicant team, a lot of public controversy so far. Staff report, please.
The project you have before you, if you may have seen once before, a couple weeks ago, we were here with a proposal for this, and there were some questions raised at that last meeting, and the goal tonight is to answer some of the questions and concerns that were raised regarding the layout of this. Is it a bar? Is it wine tasting? And then also, discussion of over-concentration of off-site sale of alcohol.
Are you going to?
As you recall, the project's located in the Fred Segal retail storefront that is at the Cross Creek Shopping Center area. This is the Fred Segal portions where the old Malibu theaters used to be. These are some pictures of the site to establish the location of where it is. The upper picture there is essentially a photo of the, looking, if you were standing at the Fred Segal storefront, that would be looking towards Malibu Creek, looking towards the ocean would be the middle picture there, and looking across the street would be the, to the west would be that photo. This photo shows exactly where the Fred Segal suite is, and the proposed wine tasting venue would be located in the upper corner of that building, that would be to, say, the northwest. There are some more site photographs, and the lower photograph actually, we'll discuss that for... we'll discuss that for a moment. Some correspondence was submitted by one of the commissioners. That lower photograph is taken from a vantage point along Cross Creek, and it's of that corner of the building that is proposed to be the wine tasting venue. There was some concern that perhaps that would be changed in the future, and right now, that walkway does not have a direct connection to the cross, or the sidewalk in front located in, along Cross Creek. There's a planter between that sidewalk and the city's sidewalk. And there was some concern that essentially that storefront would kind of become its own, and it would no longer function as proposed. And tonight, as we've discussed in previous meetings, that what you have is a retail concept of a wine tasting venue inside of a Fred Segal store, not a wine tasting venue that is separate from the Fred Segal store. So, to answer the question that was raised, which was my understanding of, could this become something separate? Could they essentially come in, put some pavers that connect the Cross Creek sidewalk there to that doorway, and now have direct access and make that its own separate use? The answer to that is if they did do that, we would have a violation of the conditional use permit. Throughout the conditional use permit, specifically the description, finding two, or condition number two, it specifically calls this a in-shop wine tasting venue. And now, we'd have to be changing that description of what we're approving this evening. In addition, that city right-of-way, so if someone were to come in and just put pavers like that, it would be a violation, and our Public Works Department would be involved in it. And it would also result in the removal of landscaping, which also could be another issue, because I don't have the numbers in front of me this evening, but shopping centers are required to maintain a certain amount of landscaping. So, if they were to do that, we'd also have potentially an issue where landscaping has been removed. And I'm not entirely certain of where the city's right-of-way and land, and their landscaping, the interrelation there. But my guess is that any pavers would be in our right-of-way based on discussions with the Public Works Department.
Richard, I just looked it up on GIS, and it looks like the building is practically right on the property line.
So, then the planting area would be in our right-of-way. So, as proposed, as from last time, it's a wine tasting venue within an existing retail space. There is no new square footage being proposed. This will be within the Fred Segal retail space. The bar will have a seating area, and there will also be one to two employees at any one time. And this is for the retail sale of the Wine Apothecary brand wines. And they'll also have wine accessories. It's important to point out the type of sales. We confirmed with the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, and given the type of license that the applicant has this evening, and that you're going to be approving, not approving their liquor license, but it's the license that's mentioned in the approval documents, that's not a general liquor store license. The applicant couldn't start selling whiskey or wine from different vendors. It's essentially a grower's license where they are allowed to sell their brand and the products that they produce. By product, I mean wine. They're, it's, they can't be selling someone else's wine. That would turn it into a liquor store, is our understanding. And once again, the hours for this would be roughly 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, except they would like to be able to have an extended closing time of 9:00 PM during the holiday season, because that would coincide with the store hours. Also, I wanted to just jump ahead and mention separation. This is an alcohol-serving area, and according to the ABC folks, some sort of barrier would be needed. That barrier does not need to be a wall. That barrier could be as simple as, say, the stanchions you see at a line for a movie, with the, like, seatbelt-type webbing material between the stanchions. Just something to say, this is the wine tasting area. And that's what the Department of Beverage Control is looking for. So, they're not looking for a hard wall or separate entrances or anything like that. Just a simple demarcation. And this commission may recall, when we did a similar conditional use permit for wine tasting in the space that was going to be Arowan, but now Vintage Grocers, that was simply the same thing. It was going to be those stanchion posts with that webbing material, and that would have been the wine tasting venue within that grocery store. This is a floor plan showing how the interior of the Fred Segal space will be laid out. The important takeaway from this is that one of the questions at the last meeting was about bathrooms and the requirement of bathrooms. Since this is going to be a wine tasting venue, there is a requirement for bathrooms. And the applicant can speak to this more this evening, but they have worked with the retailer to allow for the folks who are at the wine tasting venue to use the retailer's bathrooms. Those are the water closets you see on the upper right-hand area of the shop space there. The upper left-hand is the 190-square-foot wine tasting area. Also, there was a question about how do you clean the glasses? The little X below the water closet there, the lower of the two, that is the water access for the glass washer. And that's also on the project plans that were included as part of the project agenda packet. So, there is a mechanism there to clean the glasses that are part of this. Some of the other concern that was raised by one of the commissioners was, is this something the Public Works Department has looked at? The public, the reason for the Public Works Department is that because this is on the city's civic center wastewater treatment system, they do not use a standalone alternative wastewater treatment system. This project was looked at by the Public Works Department a few times. But upon initial submit, the Public Works Department was made aware of it, and they did approve the project, knowing about the added use to the bathrooms, and also about the dishwasher. As I mentioned, that dishwasher was on the plans, and so they did see it. There was some concern brought up at the last meeting about consistency with the city's general plan. The city's general plan talks about an undue concentration of businesses which sell alcohol for off-site consumption. Measure 73 of the city's general plan, when the implementation measure, talks about no more than one off-sale license per 2,500 residents. At the last meeting, there was some question about how is it that the city can stay consistent with that, given some of the approvals that we have issued over the past? Staff included as an attachment, attachment five to the staff report, an interpretation that was adopted in April of 2005, which addresses the off-site sale of, off-site consumption of, sale of alcohol. And the justification of, that was reached in that interpretation, was that this is something, given the size of the city, that is up to the discretion of the planning commission. And rather than just allow it by right, it's allowed through the conditional use process. And the purpose of the conditional use process, and why we have it as something in our city's municipal code, is that it is some, it gives a extra layer of review to look at the site-specific characteristics to address the question of whether or not it is appropriate to allow for this additional permit. And that way, we can remain consistent with the city's general plan. Because as we mentioned at the last meeting, there is no prohibition about liquor stores in the city zoning code. The only prohibition is that they be in certain zoning districts that are, have been designated as suitable for such. So, that's why we have the conditional use permit as a mechanism for the review of the planning commission to make a decision tonight on whether or not there's a burden here. Staff took a look at the census tract to see what has been approved in the area. So, based on that information, what we have found as approvals from this commission, of the city's commission, was that Pacific Coast Greens in 1998 received a conditional use permit that allowed for the sale of, this is now specific to the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption. We're not listing here are the CUPs that were issued for onsite sale of consumptions, like, for example, Cafe Havana and Burger 5 from, in that space there. There's a CUP that allows for onsite consumption. The Shell Gas Station, which is at the corner of this shopping center, received a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption. Barrel, a, was a wine tasting and sales venue of just generic alcohol. That's located across the highway, was in the area most recently occupied by the Chinese restaurant there. It was also the Old Champagne Bakery, if anyone remembers that far back by the Blockbuster. So, that CUP was issued by this commission. Also, Malibu Village Wines. Malibu Village Wines was there for a short time. I believe now Southerdby's, it's the little, kind of standalone office space directly across the parking lot from Fred Segal, on the same side of the street. That was Malibu Village Wines, you could term that as a liquor store. They sold wines and distilled spirits of all different vendors. And then, most recently, through the specific plan for the Whole Foods Shopping Center, Whole Foods has the ability to sell off-site. And I'd like to point out that all of these were generic, the ability to sell any alcohol. The applicant is not in the same category as these. Yes, he is selling alcohol for off-site consumption, but once again, the applicant in this place, in this case, is limited to their brand of product, their wines. They, they would need to, a different license, which would also result in us coming back to the planning commission for them to be a liquor store and have the ability to start serving, or selling, excuse me, all sorts of different wines, say whiskey, gin, or any of that. They would have to come back. As we discussed, the restrooms would be provided onsite, using the existing restrooms, and that would be made available to patrons of the wine tasting venue, so that they would be in compliance with the requirements from the Department of Beverage Control. Just to get to some of the other questions that were raised. Sorry, go through my notes here. There was a question raised by a couple of the commissioners of how many bars currently exist in the city of Malibu. We did a little bit of hunting around on the internet today, and based on what we could find, and also from the Department of Beverage Control, there are 32 known bars and restaurants within the city's jurisdiction. It was a little difficult, because they look at Malibu as Malibu, which could include Calamigos Ranch, not necessarily their operation at the Ranch of Solstice. But from best we could tell, we believe that there are 32. There was also a question about, that was brought up, about them being exempt. What kind of codes apply to a bar or liquor store? Just, and how do they relate to those regulations? According to our contact at the ABC, she was pretty specific in telling us that, and the owner can go into further detail on this, they really can't function as a bar. He's limited to pouring tastings. Someone couldn't say, I'd like to have a glass of that wine, pour me eight ounces of it, or 12 ounces, whatever it may be. The ABC folks were explaining to us that you are limited to tastings, and this is not designed to function as a bar. One could call it that, because of the fact that there's a table, you sit there and you taste wine, but it's not designed, the license isn't designed to allow for a place where folks sit, have conversation, and drink wine or beer. There was a question about minimum sizes for liquor stores or bars. Our representative Judy explained to us that there is no minimum size for a liquor store that, or a bar. They don't have such a thing. Sorry for the delay, I just want to make sure that we address all the questions. We did discuss about changing the frontage and making this a separate venue. And as we mentioned, that would be a result that would require a change in the conditional use permit, and then also a violation. And then the last question that was brought up today again was about the dishwasher. And as we mentioned, there's a dishwasher on the plans, and those plans were reviewed by the city's Public Works Department. Staff is available for any questions, as well as the applicant. And I apologize for the long presentation, just wanted to try to hit up all the questions.
Thank you, Richard. Ex parte communication disclosures, Steve?
Craig Hill and I visited the site just to take a look at where the bar, where the wine sales were going to take place, and didn't learn much that wasn't on the staff report.
Craig?
That, plus, we noticed that the doors were open on the street side, and that that was a simple, easy access being used as a frontage. So, flying in the face of the notion that you'd need to put the $30 worth of stepping stones in there, but it was actually being used as an ingress egress.
John?
I called the ABC in our area today, because I didn't know, not know what an O2 license was. I read the description, I talked to the lady in charge of Malibu. This was at 2:00, she said she hadn't had time to answer the city yet, that somebody had called and left a message, and that she would get you an answer by 5:30. So, I assumed all that stuff that you mentioned came in today.
That is correct.
She did tell me that they would need another license, and she did not know what type, she'd have to research it. And basically, that was it. So, I, you know, at some point, I'd like to hear what she actually sent you back.
Chris?
I visited the site last time, nothing new for this meeting.
Right, I haven't done anything beyond my preparation for the last time, except that I noticed between then and now, the Wall Street Journal ran an article about this sort of thing becoming very popular, husband-sitting places or something like that, that talked about. And it even talked about a place in Austin, I think it was, in Texas, where they, grocery store where they give you a free whiskey sour to walk around and shop, which sounded like a great idea. Okay, so, we have, the applicant team is William Dimm and Stacy Spiegel-Dimm and Molly Segal, I think. Is that the group? You ready to go? 15 minutes for the team.
Hi, everyone, I'd like to read a prepared statement first. Good evening, my name is Billy Dimm. I'm the founder and winemaker of Wine Apothecary, doing business as Summer Somewhere Wines, which I co-own and operate with my wife, Stacy. I'd like to take a moment to thank you for further considering our application, but more importantly, to say thank you for your service to the community. I'd also like to thank our friends in the planning department, who have been supportive in their efforts to present our program in a light that indeed differentiates our license type from that of a standard bar, dining restaurant, or a retail off-premise alcohol establishment. As you may recall from our initial hearing, there were several points of consideration raised. Perhaps most prominent among them involved clearly defining how our O2 wine growers license type is notably different from those previously mentioned businesses. This is because there are clearly defined rules and regulations and restrictions surrounding an O2 wine growers license, which is solely reserved for producers of California wine product, granting them the unique opportunity in a competitive market, in a competitive market, to share and present their product direct to consumer by means of a very small sampling, so that that customer may in turn have the opportunity to discover a locally-produced product, and if enjoyed, discern whether or not they'd like to purchase an enclosed retail bottle for their enjoyment. O2 license holders are granted solely the privilege of presenting products that they themselves produce. Unlike all other license types, which afford the holder an opportunity to sell companies, other companies' products, brands, and various types of alcohol. In this capacity, we believe an O2 license is indeed a specialized case for which there unfortunately appears to be no clearly-defined category in the Malibu City Code. We hope to address this point further in a moment, along with several other points of consideration raised at our initial hearing. But before we do, I'd like to first tell you a little bit about myself and my family, because I believe the people behind the request should hold some relevance in the decision-making process. My wife and I moved to Malibu a little over four years ago, and then to point doom several months before the arrival of our firstborn. We moved here not only because we fell in love with the area, but because we felt like it was a place we could envision putting down roots and growing a family. Unlike so many parts of Los Angeles, there seems to be a genuine sense of community, which was never more evident than in the wake of the Woolsey Fire. Seeing the community band together in an effort to heal with fundraising and various events of which my wife and I participated, and in one case... Seeing the community band together in an effort to heal with fundraising and various events of which my wife and I participated and in one case hosted, helped solidify our belief that we had made the right choice in moving here. In the coming months, we will be enrolling our son in the Point Dume preschool program with our daughter to follow in the coming year. Stacy and I are both small business owners with a passion for what we do. And in the end, simply trying to earn a living to provide for our family and perhaps one day, if we're lucky, live in one of those fancy houses that the people present to you for project approval. During our initial review, we were a bit surprised by some of the comparisons being made to our sub-leased, uh, not one hundred and ninety square foot project request. Our request was placed in line with such large enterprises as Whole Foods, the La Paz Project, restaurants, uh, seventy-sixth gas station application, which again would need to maintain entirely different license types and permits. But also why we hoped you might see past the application to the people behind the project, knowing that we are in fact small local business owners, not multimillion dollar enterprises. Hoping to practice our craft to showcase an artisan product produced specifically and especially for this location. This is also the reason we, this is also the reason we appreciate the planning department honoring our request to review our application again so quickly. Because not only is the product we produce perishable by nature, but two of the five products produced, uh, for this project maintain a limited shelf life. So pending the outcome of today's judgment, we are concerned about not having this potential outlet to sell and present our product to the market in a timely enough manner for purchase relevance. As a small business, I'm sure you can understand this is simply not a, a loss we can afford. Whether the final decision today is approval or denial, a timely outcome is greatly appreciated to better understand how we might manage this perishable inventory. All this said, I'd like to briefly highlight the other points of consideration brought up at our initial hearing. The first of which involved the land use implementa- implementation measure seventy-three, which would not require a denial of, of our application. Measure seventy-three of the general plan calls for requiring a conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol for an off-site consumption and permit, uh, no more than one, and permit one more, no more than one off-site for twenty-five-hundred restaurants, off-sale license for more than, uh, twenty-five-hundred restaurants. Importantly, in California, an off-site license requires that beverages be consumed off-site and does not limit products sold exclusively, uh, produced by the licensee. Wine Apothecary, uh, by way of Summer Somewhere, holds an O two license type, which again permits, which again permits the license, uh, holder to allow small but limited onsite consumption of those products exclusively produced by the licensee. Because measure seventy-three strictly concerns off-site consumption and Wine Apothecary's license, O two license maintains unique onsite consumption rules. Measure seventy-three would not apply to, would not apply to present, uh, to the present CUP application. In any case, an ordinance restricting the number of off-sale licenses has not been incorporated into the municipal code since both land use policy four-one-five and measure seventy-three went into effect in nineteen ninety-five. Thus, even if Wine Apothecary was strict, strictly an off-site license holder, which it is not, measure seventy-three would not require the denial of, denial of our application. At the prior hearing, planning commission members raised the question as to the type of license Apothecary holds. As previously noted, is a type O two Wine Growers License, which is unique in that it is granted only to those producers of California wine. It is, it is unique in that it allows wine growers to offer three to five one-ounce tastings exclusively of their wine produced and bottled in California for its customers. Again, considering the competition from places like France, Italy, Argentina, Australia, this special tasting allowance affords O two California wine growers this exclusive channel to display and sell their product in a highly competitive landscape. Wine Apothecary would be exclusively selling its small handcraft brand, Summer Somewhere, an artisan project produced, bottled, and designed by my wife and I, local Malibu residents. These wines would be limited to this location, making it both distinctive and original. Based upon the license type and limitations, uh, associated with the O two classification, we do, do not believe it should be lumped in with a bar, with the bar category as it appeared to have been in last month's hearing. Another concern raised at the initial, uh, meeting involves simply the serving of items containing alcohol and whether it might increase the number of problem drivers on PCH. First, I'd like to note that the project would be managed by one professional lead certified project manager, trained to discern whether or not service should be presented. Second, and more importantly, we offer, we are offering one to fi- uh, three to five one-ounce tasting samples, which roughly equates to that of one glass of wine. If we were an on-premise dining establishment, customers might have as many as three to five glasses of, full glasses of wine before a server or bartender might begin to express their concern. Due to the nature of our license and the environment in which we are hoping to present our program, we hope you would understand that this is not a model intent upon driving consumption, but one rather designed to enhance the customer experience and support sales. Additionally, an issue was raised at the prior hearing about the number of tables and chairs, the impact, uh, the pa- uh, the, the, the number of patrons might have on parking. As a result, the number of chairs has been reduced from eleven in the initial plan to now a total of nine seats. One of which would be a dedicated ADA comply- for ADA compliance. Plus, one designated licensed and trained employee operating within the space. As there are hundreds of available public parking spaces in Malibu Village Shopping Center, and that Fred Segal is home to what was once the Malibu Theater. This modest-sized project, minimal employees, and small number of chairs will not have a material impact on the parking center. Moreover, concern was raised about the availability of public restrooms, which I think we've covered at this point. Um, they are, uh, the original restrooms that are a part of the movie theater, which now we will have use for our, uh, the consumers onsite paying, paying customers in this case. Uh, lastly, I'd like to touch briefly on how the project will provide customers a unique experience. As you may be aware, the original Fred Segal, Malibu is located directly across the street from its current location in the nineteen seventies. Fred Segal stores have endured and are popular because of their shop and shop model. It is well-known that traditional brick and mortar retailers are struggling to find and retain customers. So providing customers a unique shopping experience has been shown to help retailers maintain customer loyalty. It is this unique shop and shop experience that has helped set Fred Segal apart from other retailers. An extension of this concept would be permitting our modest project to help add to the customer experience and in turn hopefully further ingratiate ourselves to, uh, and Fred Segal to the community by way of involvement, prospective events, and more. I hope we've made our case that the operation of this modest program will provide, uh, customers with a unique experience. After hours of homework and due diligence, what it ultimately comes down to is whether this commission believes there's grounds for denying our application. We believe we have clearly cited that there would be no grounds to do so as presented under the current law. So in effect, what we are asking is whether the commission might choose to support members of its community and their efforts to establish and grow their small business in which they put their heart and hopes into growing. We thank you for your time and consideration, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, William.
Of course. If, uh, Molly wants to say a couple of words, or Stacy?
You still have five minutes.
Okay. My name's Molly, I'm lucky enough to work with Stacy and Billy and really have gone to know them and their beautiful family. I can't say enough amazing things about them and about the product that they make as well. Um, I worked really closely with Fred Segal Malibu. And Fred Segal first opened in Malibu in nineteen seventy-five and the whole concept was creating a community. There's no retail in Malibu. And what my grandfather du- did was he built a playground at the same time. And by doing so, it was a way for people to come together and congres and be a whole. And I think Fred Segal's always been that type of model where you bring people together, you create a sense of community. Small retail's also struggling right now, everyone knows that, it's really hard business. So it's all about being experience-driven and creating this opportunity for these small companies to grow and flourish. And I feel like giving Stacy and Billy that opportunity would be phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
One last thing I'd like to add.
Sure.
Just to the point of, of whether or not that, um, the entrance there, or we were, we were planning about making those, uh, those doors that are on the side there, any type of entrance. We have been closely in touch with the ABC, uh, because we are well aware of the duplicate application for our O two, which is our right under the privilege of having, uh, an O two Wine Growers License. We have the ability to apply for the duplicate, which is the area in which we can showcase the product, which is the quote-unquote tasting room. So the, the second license that we're talking about, or that was mentioned, is the O two duplicate license, which has already been submitted. And they're essentially waiting for the city to decide whether or not they're going to issue the CUP before they can go ahead and present us with that duplicate O two. Uh, that being said, uh, that, that point of, uh, that point of entrance i- is really going to be viewed as only solely a point of, of exit. Uh, we're actually going to put, uh, as was mentioned, there, there's no need to have, uh, wall partitions, uh, defining by way of the O two, uh, license or the ABC code, uh, but we will have partitions both inside the store designating the area that would be solely, you know, for the wine tasting experience. And then just outside those doors, we're also going to have signage that says, this is not an entrance. Uh, you know, this is an exit only, uh, and it's really going to be treated as more of a means to have airflow come in. Uh, you can see the beauty of what's going on in the store, obviously aesthetically, and then, um, and then, uh, you know, just, just making sure that it's an exit. So the only point of entrance, uh, and obviously is an emergency exit in any way, case, or form for any kind of emergency. Uh, which, uh, there are doors along that entire side, sidewall there. So, uh, the entrance will be in, in essence, the front, we're not doing any major renovations of any kind. This is essentially just our requesting an application for a right to have our small business there.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this item? Yes, Dennis?
Evening, um, it, it just seems like at a time when we're trying to keep doors open in our town with business. We have a nice young family here that decided to move here and they have kids. We need kids because we're trying to get the hell away from Santa Monica, so we'll take as many of these kids as we can get. This is, this is a great chance for a, a young family to try and do something here in town. Very simple, they're hemmed in in the box, they're just like this, they can't go outside the box, they're not going to hurt anybody. You know, a little something when people come in, it's a nice store, so let's hope that everybody can see their way to approve this, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, we're back at the commission table, who would like to go first? John?
I'll start at least, uh, Richard. There's been a big, big deal here made about how this is not in the municipal code. There's five per, or one, five of them from Malibu. But I Googled it, I mean, I, I went in municipal code and searched it and, yes, the general plan is in there and it, and seventeen oh-four oh-eight oh. Say, it has to be consistent with the general plan and the general plan says five. Uh, seventeen seventy-four oh-one oh. Says that you can amend the general plan if you want to and change that. Uh, seventeen oh-seventy-two oh-six oh. Says you have to make findings it's consistent with the general plan. Seventeen forty-six oh-three oh says you must give a CUP. And, um, it must be consistent with the general plan ordinance one-fifty-five nineteen ninety-six, whatever that, that is. And there were seventeen other references, okay? And, um, this is in the municipal code. So this thing about, oh gee, it's, the general plan doesn't count, to me is, is, is senseless. Now, um, you mentioned there were thirty-two of these in town. Well, and he, and the applicant said, oh, we're, we're unique. But you walk two-hundred feet and there's one exactly like it, the Strange Family Nurse, oh, Vineyard. Exactly like it, there is no difference, except it's slightly bigger. Somehow that got permitted without coming to us, okay? So it isn't unique, somehow you gave it to them. Now, I don't remember, you said last time Burger-Fry had a license so these, they could use it. But Burger-Fry, it is, I remember didn't have a takeout license, you didn't go there to buy a six-pack. So how did that happen? Now, when I counted the number of bars and you said this was a bar in the last, um, afreport, I counted eighteen of them. Or fo- places that serve booze in four shopping centers, right there, not the whole city. So that, to me, that's a concentration. So, um, is there something I've missed on how this is somehow unique and, and it's not one of the five? And, and we should have thirty-two when the general plan says you can only have five?
You haven't missed anything, you are correct that the municipal code requires consistency with the city's general, or, yes, general plan. And as we mentioned, there was an interpretation made, given the size of the city, the number of existing licenses, uh, to look at over-concentration. And as I mentioned, it used the conditional use permit, uh, mechanism as a way for the planning commission to make a determination. And as I discussed and showed in the presentation, uh, this commission has used that mechanism in the past to make determinations. Uh, so if the commission determines tonight, uh, that they wish to use, uh, the, this conditional use permit mechanism because the general, or excuse me, the city zoning code does say liquor stores are permitted, subject to a conditional use permit. The general plan does not specifically say a, a number of them are permitted. Uh, but it would be up to the, the commission this evening to make that determination. And also, I believe to answer Commissioner Mazza's earlier point, uh, when he called the ABC, uh, folks, uh, and asked them questions, uh, that we, it sounds like we had asked as well, and you had wondered if, what those answers were. The woman at the Van Nuys office did confirm to us that there is a pending application, uh, for a duplicate type-two license, as was mentioned by the applicant. And that application, um, as I mentioned, is pending. And if we approve this, uh, CUP, then that application could be, uh, granted. The, the folks there, as I mentioned earlier, were specifically asked about, um, whether the O, uh, the O two master license is allowed, for more than one site, and apparently to, to do more sites, my understanding is they have to keep applying for these duplicate permits like they did today. Uh, so at this point, they only have the one location. She did confirm that the store does not have to be a certain size, however, she did explain to us that the wine area cannot exceed the size of the retail clothing store. And so the, that's, uh, was a maximum, I guess you could say, was given to us. And then she confirmed, uh, that some sort of barrier would be required, but it doesn't need to be a hard barrier like a wall. I hope that answers your questions about the email.
Did she say anything about, is this, we're talking about the doors opening and, and it's only an exit? Could those doors be open where it's open air and you, and you could, you could talk to people in the bar and you could walk in that way? So in other words, you walk by and you see a bar? Is that, is that, you could open those big giant doors and all you need is a tape around an area?
Yes.
The applicant indicated that the, the doors would be open at times, just like they are today for airflow purposes. But it is not their intention to use that as an entrance, but yes, you'd be able to see in.
Okay.
If that's what your question is.
If it's possible, it's, I guess it's not possible to, to airplane my iPad to the screen because I have Google Street View here just showing the picture of, save a thousand words.
But what, what's the concern, I guess is what, I don't quite understand what the concern is. I mean, if, um, if people can only, um, if they're going to arrange it in a way so that people can only exit through that, those, um, accordion-style doors, um, you could add a condition, um, that they do that? I don't think that that's in there right now, but, um...
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, uh, it's, you know, my purpose is not to turn this into New Orleans, okay? And, and when I see, what I count is eighteen places to get booze. And I see another store exactly like this, and I go back to the general plan and it says you only can have five in the whole city. I wonder what the justification is. Uh, wh- where, where are we making the finding that one of eighteen is not concentrated when we want to have five for the whole city? Is there a reason staff decided that this was not a concentration?
As I presented in the report, uh, the council, or excuse me, the commission has approved, what I would term, as a planner, as a greater intensity of liquor sales in this area. Uh, because once again, there is a uniqueness here, I know that, that's a term being thrown around this evening. But this owner, or vendor, is limited to selling their wines. Directly across from this, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for a liquor store. And I would definitely say that a liquor store has a greater intensity because they're going to have a lot of products.
What liquor store was that?
That was, I think that was called Malibu Wines.
Yeah.
Malibu Village Wines, and that was directly across the parking lot from this. And that was directly across the parking lot from this. Barrel was also another approval of the planning commission. That too had a, in my opinion, a greater intensity because that was, basically, that functioned as a bar. It served a variety of wines and they were full pours. This is once again limited to tastings and also, um, limited to their product only. So this is more of a retail use. And also, the over-concentration, uh, issue that is brought up in the city's general plan, I just want to make sure that we keep our discussion this evening focused on that. When we mention it, um, it is specific to off-site sales, not onsite consumption. Uh, so bars are not part of that, uh, that general plan policy.
Right, and, and we heard, just heard from the applicant that you can only drink essentially five ounces. So essentially, the business is off, off-site sales, is that correct? The majority of the sales will be off-site? Okay, can I ask the applicant a question? Can you come up here? What does a bottle of Cabernet cost?
Uh, well, we have two.
Okay, the cheapest one.
But we, the cheapest one is, uh, fifty-five dollars.
Okay, and what is, what is five, five tastings cost?
Five tast, you can do a tasting for, we have a, we'll, we'll have a ten-dollar tasting and a fifteen-dollar tasting.
Okay, thank you. So that, that means that the majority of the sales by definition is off-site. And, uh, because they just can't sell that much, one glass by glass. Now, so what, and we, you know, we have, apparently we have approved, I don't ever remember hearing Malibu wines come before us. I know the Strange Winery did not come to us, which is exactly the same. By definition, I know we turned down other off-site sales for this very reason, for, you know, for, five out of a hundred, or five out of the whole city. Uh, we did that on several occasions. Uh, so what makes this unique? That it's, what I'm asking is really, how, we're in an area that's got eighteen places to have a bottle of wine.
Commissioner Mazza, this, it's, it's really up to the commission's judgment. So I think, I mean, Richard's explained in the staffer, through the staff report and his comments, how staff came to this conclusion. I mean, if you're not convinced, then...
No, well, I didn't see it in the staff report.
Well, let, let me paraphrase it, because it's, it, they only do tastings and you can have a maximum of like five one-ounce glasses and they're mainly there to sell their wines that they grow. That's what makes them new, unique. If you don't think that that's unique, that's fine.
Okay.
But let, let me see if there's somebody else down there.
Well, I wanna keep asking questions.
Well, but let's just take it in turns if we will.
Fine.
Craig?
Uh, if I can just encapsulate what John is just saying. What we, with the, the policy that says we want to limit the, uh, off-site sales to what amounts to five in the city, given the population. And right there in the sta, staff report, they're calling out six in the vicinity. That would be an undue concentration by policy four-point-one-point-five. On its face, that doesn't work. Now, the, so the only way I could see this working is we just condition the heck out of it. And some of these are because, the way I see it now, with that folding glass door open there and the, the discussion about, oh, it's just an exit. When we were there, that, that's just part of the flow of the place. And so I would wanna see, for, for example, just if, if this could fly for anybody else, that, that those back doors remain closed at all times and there are two other sets further up towards the front of the building that you could have open for breeze. But that that back corner would be closed, that you would have, and so there'd be no egress through the wine bar. That you would have no signage on that Cross Creek Road street that suggests that this is a bar here. That you would only have some kind of signage within the store, within the clothing store. So it's not a, um, you're not advertising it as a big, big deal. And I, I think, I don't know what other conditions we could put on that.
What are you trying to prevent? Are keeping the doors?
I'm, I'm seeing another liquor store and ironically, if we're gonna have anything that's a bar and I would just say, if there's alcohol being served and there's alcohol going out the door, I don't see any reason to distinguish it from a liquor store or a bar, I just don't. It's, but ironically, I would rather, if there's alcohol being served, I'd rather see a community space that has, you know, folk music night or local art exhibit or something that's, that's not so much just a visitor, sort of tourist-serving kind of thing.
There's no room there for that stuff.
No, there's no room there. So I, I would, I would just think that if this is gonna fly at all, it has to be really conditioned and the presence needs to be diminished so it's not like, somebody said, New Orleans. And by the way, Fred Segal didn't bring that kind of retail thing to Malibu, Dean's was already there. So, next comments?
Chris, uh, Steve, you have anything to say?
What, what's a tasting cost, fifteen bucks? They're not gonna be coming running off the street for fifteen-dollar glasses of wine. I just don't, I mean, I don't think that's gonna be a...
It's all, it's all the bead sales from, you know, for the floats that go by, that's the big issue.
You know, what I, what I find is interesting in, uh, as part of the, the light thing for the Malibu Lumber Yard, there was an agreement, there's a, some, some language in there that said there was a twenty-seventeen agreement, uh, between the city and the Lum, and the lumberyard and had something to do with signs. So I asked Richard to send me a copy of it and it had nothing to do with signs, but it was the lease between the city and Pierce. And interesting, in that lease agreement, it says you can't have bars. I just thought that was, I don't know why they say no over there and yes over here. I just thought that was an interesting piece.
They gave him a bar.
Well, I, I'm just saying, there was some reason they, they said they don't wanna have them. Look, I, I'm back to the point, uh, I'm, well, I'm moving to the point of saying, I think making businesses successful is something we should think about, alright? Now, I don't know if, you know, the, the, sort of the limitations you're talking about, you're gonna get five one-ounce glasses of wine. I'll tell you, if his wife is in there shopping and buying, you know, two thousand bucks worth of clothes, they'll give him as much wine as they want. Alright, so, uh, some of this stuff is, is nice to talk about, but I, but I, I'm starting to move toward a position that says, let him try it.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking similarly, you know, it just, it makes sense that this should be allowed. What I'm trying to figure out is what, like, the, the points that John and, you know, Commissioner Hill, sorry, Commissioner Mazza and Hill are calling out, um, just where the general plan just explicitly says, no more than one per two, twenty-five-hundred. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not really seeing the, the argument where I can say, yep, I get it, this, this isn't, is, is not, we're not intentionally violating that number, you know?
Let me throw this out to you, because since I was there when the general plan was written and what people were thinking about was liquor stores with the signs that go up, you know, the, the neon signs and the Budweiser thing on the level and the refrigerators back there and you could walk in and you could buy a six-pack or you could buy a short dog and you could walk out. That's what, that was before. I don't think wine tasting had been invented by, by the time we were writing the general plan. I don't think it was in the contemplation of the people who wrote the general plan that this is what, that this was the evil that they were talking about trying to address. So, take that for what it's worth.
To, to just clarify and add on that, I don't know if you can see this on the screen, if there's a close-up, but the, the problem is that, my problem is that this plays as a storefront on this street. Not, notwithstanding that you need a couple stepping stones there, but people were coming in and out there. So it's, it is like a storefront liquor store. If it could be conditioned so that it really behaves like it's something that's in the back of the space and it's not like, like you're saying with the neon sign or whatever, that's like, wine here, you know? Then, then that would feel a little...
Let me ask the, uh, let me ask the applicant. Come, come up to the microphone. What, if anything, have you contemplated about signage?
Uh, well, minor. Because we are a sublease within the space, we're not really entitled to do, nor have we applied to do much by way of signage. So we were thinking, with the approval of Fred Segal, we would have in the front of the store, which is the actual entrance to the store, maybe an umbrella that says Summer Somewhere Wines that basically, you know, promotes that people can come in and do something a little bit different inside Fred Segal. It's hard to not have any signage because that basically debilitates us as a business concept, so we need something. We might have had, uh, you know, we might be considering a sandwich board type thing, which is...
I take it you weren't contemplating a, a separate sign by a separate entrance to the store?
Never have been. We, we are under the presumption that this is still an experiment. It is a sublease, so we are just hoping that we can, uh, launch a successful program there. If it works, we're, we're thrilled. If not, uh, you know, uh, as many of the other unfortunate local businesses have, have learned, uh, they, they don't stay in business.
Can, can I ask, would it work for you to have a condition that says those back folding doors, that there are three sections of folding doors, to say that the back single section would remain closed?
Um, can I make a suggestion if we had kept it open for airflow but had like tall planters or something to block it? So there was absolutely no way that people could come in?
I think the planters would probably violate a fire department access requirement there.
They would have to be spaced appropriately, but we would be willing to do something.
And they'd be on city property.
Sorry?
They'd be on city property also.
Okay.
Okay, I have another comment though.
Okay, John.
When you say thirty years ago, the, during the general plan, they didn't contemplate a tasting room. Well, they certainly contemplated, uh, gas stations and liquor stores and we've turned them down on those rules. You know, it's, you have to be consistent. Now, the code adopted the general plan and it allowed us to change it. And it allowed us to change the, the code. But right now, it says no, okay? Now, granted, okay, we can do anything we want unless somebody chooses us, right? But do we wanna just, you're talking about making up rules and the last thing, this is totally made up when you have, you're adding the thirty-second liquor store in Malibu.
John, it's only, it's only made up if you assume that this is a liquor store.
By definition, they have a license for a liquor store.
It's an O-two license, which is printed from twenty-one, don't already, sorry.
When we, we visited the Malibu Lumber Yard to look at the signs, uh, I stopped by to do the wine tasting. It's strange, alright? And I met the, the, I guess it was his woman who runs the place. And she, we spent, what, an hour talking to her, forty-five minutes, someplace in there?
Twenty minutes.
And I felt, well, it was a good wine.
I didn't have a wine.
But she was saying how much it, it, it had, that wine tasting, what it did for her, her customers and the people that were coming in and how it, it made for a pleasant place for them to visit and, you know, so, I mean, having heard that, you sit back and say, you know, as long as it's controlled, as long as I'm not, you know, having people wandering out there, you know, blasted, uh, and, and driving up and down the road. It seems to be something that's good for both the business and in bringing people into the city.
Do you agree that you shouldn't own, open a liquor store without coming to the planning commission and getting a CUP? Which is what she did.
I can't go back there.
No, no, I know. But I mean, should we just say, that's okay, we should praise it?
John, let's, let's stick to this application.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we're getting pretty loose here when we're on thirty-two and we're supposed to have five.
So I'm gonna, uh, try a motion here. I'm gonna say that we, um, that we approve the staff recommendation, uh, with the following conditions. That, um, that there be no signage by the back doors, uh, however, if you can more precisely define the back doors, perhaps.
Meaning the ones, um, that open on the Cross Creek?
Yeah.
Correct.
On Cross Creek.
No signage on Cross Creek?
No signage on, alright, I'll go with that. No signage on Cross Creek. That, that the signage be limited to perhaps a sandwich board or a, I, I, that's the wrong way to do this.
Sandwich boards are not allowed in Malibu.
Yeah, they're not allowed anyway, but, but, uh, that there be no, uh, 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 no signage affixed to the building or no signage affixed to any of the windows. And that, uh, whatever signage is employed be located immediately adjacent to the main entrance to the store.
There's already signage affixed to the building, the Fred Segal signage.
No, no, no.
Signage for wine.
I'm sorry. Signage for this.
But this is for the CUP for the, for the property. So if you say...
But it's for the tenant in the property, is it not?
Yeah, but, but this is the CUP for the property itself. So if you're gonna say there's nothing affixed to the outside, you could create a problem for Fred Segal itself.
Wait a minute, so I...
But it's associated with this particular use.
This particular, no signage for this particular use be affixed to the exterior.
And the applicant's wine apothecary not Segal, right?
Is for the wine tasting and it's made during the whole store.
And this is an amendment to the, to the CUP for Fred Segal, correct?
No.
No, this is separate CUP?
This is a separate CUP, right?
Richard?
Just like the juice bar within...
Yes, that is correct. It's a separate resolution, separate from the store.
Okay, well, we can clarify that it would not affect Fred Segal.
Can I ask a question on that? Wait a minute, until I, let me, let me finish my motion, alright? Got it?
No signage on Cross Creek or affixed...
Any signage be, no signage affixed to the exterior of the building and that any signage relating to this CUP be immediately adjacent to the main entrance to the store.
That faces the parking lot.
That faces the parking lot, that's right.
Well, no signage on Cross Creek.
I said that too, yeah.
Well, they can move, they can move the entrance.
The signage is allowed to the exterior if it's on the side that's not facing Cross Creek?
It's only allowed if it's immediately adjacent to the main entrance to the Fred Segal store.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my motion, do I get a second?
Can I, can I ask you some questions?
Can I get a second?
I'll give you a sec.
Thank you, now, questions?
Yes.
Discussion?
Trevor. CUPs go with the land.
Yes.
They don't go with a lease. This has to be an amendment to Fred Segal's CUP. This is a lease.
No, there's not a, Fred Segal doesn't have a CUP. It's retail, retail is allowed by right in this zone. It doesn't have a CUP. This is a brand-new CUP for a one-hundred-ninety-square-foot portion of this property, of the overall parcel and it's located within this tenant space.
Okay, so Fred Segal goes out of business, does that remain in, in effect?
Then if another retail store opens up in this, in the Fred Segal space, then this CUP still exists because it runs with the land.
But it's not Fred Segal's CUP.
That's correct. Well, the, the property owner owns the CUP.
Okay, then, then I would ask Jeff, I would ask Jeff to amend that to say that it expires upon closure for six months.
That's already, that's a standard condition, it's in the municipal code when, for any conditional use.
Other comments?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable having access through that back part where, because we're saying we're gonna rope it off and it's gonna be in the back corner of the room. To have that back window open and have it be a functional access coming or, coming or going defeats that whole notion that this is just a little thing tucked in the back of the, is there some way? You're saying you need air. I mean, you've got two other big windows on that side, could you not get enough air by opening those?
Well, you're not allowing signage, so we, we, you're gonna completely suffocate the idea of our, of our program if people can't understand that there's, there's something to be done there, right? So just seeing through the windows, you know, if we, I, I, I'm one-hundred percent happy with, um, you know, creating a, a, you know, condition that ropes off the area as solely an exit or for emergency access. But if we can't put any kind of signage there, uh, to not have, uh, you know, people at least see that there's something going on there, I, I, I'm, I'm a little confused.
Wait, so hang on, you're, you're saying you can limit the access completely, but you can't do it without the, any signage? So that would...
Well, you're also saying that, that that's only an exit, but people won't know to come in there because you don't have the doors open. Doesn't make sense.
Well, we would have to put, we would have to establish that there would, there would need to be some sort of exit.
Around the front.
Exit-only signage that is allowed there. This is not to promote the business.
No, if they come in from the front, why do they need to exit through the side?
Let me, let me ask you a question. Because what I, what I understood you were doing here was having a little pop-up bar in a corner of the Fred Segal store, which meant that it was for Fred Segal customers to come in there and it's to, you know, it's to enhance the experience of the Fred Segal customers, right? Not people walking in off the street who happen to see, oh, this guy's selling wine here. Uh, it's be, it was to enhance the, the, the experience of the Fred Segal customers. Which means that, that if you wanted to announce that your wine was there... Which means that, that if you wanted to announce that your wine was there, which is why I suggested that you, as you suggested, that you might have an umbrella on the top or a sandwich, you know, although they are illegal, but they're all over town, um, you know, announcing that, that, that your wines are available, but it'd be right by the entrance to the Fred Segal store.
Correct.
Not, not an exterior sign. So that's what, that's where I'm having a problem.
I have a suggestion. Is there any way that we could compromise and say, say that the doors or windows could only be opened by a certain amount, which would obviously make people couldn't go in and out?
I frankly don't have, I don't have a problem with the doors being open. I have a problem with people entering the store through your bar.
Right.
And we, and we don't want that either.
Okay, exactly. So then you don't need signage there because you're not gonna have people in.
The only signage I was saying is, maybe we needed something that says it was an exit only, not something that says it's a tasting room. That's all I was bringing up.
Okay.
My question is, why does it need to be an exit? If you can enter the wine bar from, through the store, why do you need to exit the other way? I mean, it's not like a Disneyland ride, you know?
I don't know. I mean, you know, the only appeal that it has to us is to let the air come in so that the people that are sitting there during this experience are not uncomfortable during periods of, you know...
Well, you have, you have three do, three sets of double doors directly next to you.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's go back to the, the motion that I made that you seconded. Just one quick question. So if, if, if I'm not buying something from Fred Segal, I can walk in and get a glass of wine, right?
You could, yeah, you could get a tasting, yeah. And buy a bottle of wine if you'd like.
One other creative potential solution here, we're, we're focusing on the fact you can enter right there. Have you considered maybe moving the, the area further into the store just so it's not right by?
You can't do it, no room.
I, I mean, is that anything that could be considered?
You mean to move it towards the front?
Like, move it towards where the...
The area that we agreed to lease that we also applied with the O-two duplicate is already...
It's all locked in on that location.
It's all locked in, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, let's see, we, we do have to move along. Let's see. If I'm, if I'm sitting there drinking, I want the door open.
Yeah, and you want to walk in through the street, too.
There you go. So could, could, can we get, can we get the motion restated, please?
I have a notion here. Whatever that boundary is that they're putting in the store, you talked about a velvet rope or whatever that is, that wraps all the way around in front of that doorway. So you have the doors open for air, but it's clear that the boundary goes all the way around.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll accept that. Steve, you gonna accept it as a...
I'm, I'm, I'm in.
Okay, now have you got it, Trev?
Sure, let me give this a shot.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Trevor, just a second. Let's get Trev, Trevor's chara phrase first.
All right. So the motion is staff's recommendation with the following additions. First, that no, no signage of any kind for this use shall be located on the Cross Creek side of the building. Signage for this use shall only be allowed on the south side of the building, immediately adjacent to the entrance. This does not affect the signage for the retail use. Number two, velvet, what do we call this, a velvet rope or restricted?
Partition.
Trevor, Richard, do you have a term for the boundary thing?
Perhaps it would just be best in the condition just to say, a, a boundary shall be installed between the doors that face Cross Creek and the wine tasting area. And then that way it can, they can work with the fire department if needed to make sure they don't create an access issue.
So a physical boundary shall be located on all sides of the use.
Do you want to say such as?
No.
Does that match your, your motion and your second?
That is my motion. It's a second. Who you got? John, you had another point?
Yeah. Trevor, this is in the, in the municipal code. You need to make findings for a variance. This is, it's required to change this. It's in the municipal code. You have to either change the general plan or get a variance. So this has to be a variance. We have to make the findings for why.
That's your interpretation. The interpretation from the, from the motion would be that it's not, it, it doesn't fall under that, the, the type of use restricted by the general plan.
Okay, I want to put in the record then, seventeen oh four oh eight oh, seventeen-point-seventy-four oh one oh, seventeen-point-seventy-two oh six oh, and seventeen forty-six oh three oh, which requires that.
It's all in the record. Can we get it? Kathleen, can you call the role, please?
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break. We'll be back at ten o'clock. Fifteen, ten? Would you prefer ten? Ten-minute break. We'll be back at five minutes. Still, the Malibu Planning Commission agenda for February eighteenth, and we're now at item number five B, which is...
Can I answer? Just wanted to point out that if we get through this in half an hour or so, then we can get the final item.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, there's just, well, there is, yeah, there are two, you're right.
There are two.
Um, okay, so five B is the master sign program and the minor modification, uh, for, thereof, for, uh, thirty-nine, thirty-nine Cross Creek Road, which is the Malibu lumberyard. Can I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. Uh, the item you have before you tonight is master sign program number nineteen dash zero zero one for the project located at thirty-nine, thirty-nine Cross Creek Road to allow for the approval of a new master sign program and construction of a new monument sign and two discretionary requests. This slide demonstrates the vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site and the surrounding area. The project site is located on a city-owned parcel in the CV one zone. The project description is to approve a new master sign program for the Malibu lumberyard shopping center, a construction of a new seven-foot, six-inch-tall monument sign with tenants listed. And the discretionary requests include minor modification number twenty dash zero zero three for a twenty percent increase in monument sign height to seven feet and six inches tall from the six-foot tall maximum, and minor modification number twenty dash zero zero four to allow a reduction for the minimum distance between signs from the required six-foot separation. Pictured here is a site plan showing the ground and upper levels of the Malibu lumberyard. New tenant ID signs are indicated in blue and new blade signs are indicated in red. The new monument sign is shown on the lower right-hand side of the ground level, site plan shown in green. Picture here are the existing signs and sign areas of the center. The pole sign on the left will be demolished and not replaced. Here is a project rendering of the proposed tenant signs along PCH. Here's a rendering of the proposed seven-foot, six-inch monument sign located five feet from the public right-of-way along Cross Creek Road. There's also a rendering of the proposed blade signs and upper floor ID signs. In summary, the proposed project meets all city codes and standards inclusive of the two discretionary requests. A revised resolution is requested to be adopted to remove the condition to allow signs to be located three feet from other signs, or six feet is required. The revised resolution will all, will allow signs to not have a minimum separation per minor modification number twenty dash zero zero four. Staff recommends adopting the revised resolution, approving the master sign program, and two minor modifications. The applicant is also present to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Ex parte communication disclosures. Chris?
Uh, phone call with the applicant team, otherwise nothing else.
John?
None.
Uh, I met with the applicant, with Commissioner Euring. Um, one thing I learned is that they mean the renderings to constitute part of the formal proposal, so I don't know whether we're being directed here to adopt the renderings in toto, which might have unforeseen consequences or might, or whether we're supposed to condition specific aspects of those renderings in the resolution. But the renderings sort of differ in some aspects from the written proposal. And finally, learned that the Cafe Havana awning signage would have to go if the intent is to meet the proposed sleek look. That's it.
Steve? Agree with Commissioner Hill. Uh, the only other thing, while we, while we were there, we stopped in at the, uh, wine, the wine tasting. Strange. And had a conversation with the lady who runs the place, and she sort of gave me a perspective of why it's important to have some of these outside signs lit up so people can find the place. Uh, she gave me a pretty good perspective of some of the problems they were having, so that just helped me sort of think about the thing a little bit better. Okay, I met with the applicant's attorney, attorney... Okay, I met with the applicant's attorney, attorneys last week, but discussed the basic program, but didn't learn anything that wasn't included in the staff report. All right, Mr. Arnone, 15 minutes.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Jim Arnone with Latham and Watkins. I represent the applicant. The written staff report, I think, was pretty thorough, and I don't think I really have anything I need to take up our time with this evening, but I'm here to respond to any questions or concerns that the Commissioners might have.
Why don't you respond to the first, the question that Commissioner Hill just raised about the renderings being part of the application?
So it's my understanding that the Master Sign Program is as depicted in our submittal and that that is what the staff report is recommending approval of. So those depictions do become limitations. So for example, where on the monument sign it has six tenant signs, that's how many we get.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner Hill?
I do have other questions. I guess we're back, we're with me, okay.
Well, yeah, if we're going to go to questions, then let me ask if there's anybody else in the audience who wants to address the Commission on this item, and if there isn't, isn't, we'll close the public hearing now, and then we can ask questions of you as we go forward. Back at the commission table, Commissioner Hill.
Chair Jennings, can I just make one clarification? As far as the Master Sign Program goes, there may be some parts that we would take out of it as far as being the, Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, the, you know, official Master Sign Program going forward, like the whole existing conditions section isn't really pertinent to what is proposed as, for approval today. So we would probably streamline the...
How do we know that?
Submittal. I'm just telling you right now.
What do you want to streamline?
I would take out the existing conditions section.
You took out the which?
Existing conditions section, because that's what you're replacing. There's a portion of the plan package that's called existing conditions.
Right, that, that helps clarify my question on that, and sort of a related question. This sounds stupid, but this plan entirely supplants anything in the currently approved plan, right? Just to be clear?
Yes, I believe that's correct, right? Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear, I believe that, Bonnie, just to be specific, I would say that the first seven pages would be taken away. Those, if I'm not mistaken, it, that's all the existing conditions, and page eight is labeled proposed enhancements, and starting on nine is an actual plan, a site plan showing new signs.
So you're clarifying that the existing conditions section is on pages one through seven?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and those are the pages that staff's proposing be removed from the application?
Okay. John?
Yeah, on your, part of this new sign program, on your, on your comparison of approved signs and proposed enhancements, which is the last one of your things, you have a table, and it, and it gives A, B, C, all these things, and you're determining the footage where you say, for example, the first one is 91 feet on Cross Creek, and so many feet on interior courtyard equals 180 feet. But the code says you only count the street frontage, you don't count the interior. So all of those signs are double what they should be. And is that, is that what you intended?
I believe that is all existing sign area.
Yeah, we're getting rid of existing.
Yeah, they're getting rid of all of that.
Okay, so the code says you measure the frontage. It doesn't say you measure the interior, the front and back of a building. I can give you the code number, but it's, let me see if I can find it here.
A street frontage?
Yes.
I thought it was 1.5 feet around a corner.
No. The aggregate area of the primary sign accessory signs, it's, let's see here, is this it? Yes, okay, it's 1752070A. I can read it too if you want, but it's, well, let me read it. "The aggregate area of the primary sign and accessory signs for any business in the building located within 100 feet of any public right-of-way shall not exceed one square foot of area for each foot of primary building frontage." Okay, that's along the street.
Does it say along the street?
Well, primary building frontage, there's only one front, okay? It's not an interior, well, oh, come on, that's as clear as bell.
Because you say so.
Okay.
No, but I think about, yeah, I think about the Trancas Center, for example, where there's, there's, it wraps around the side, and we went through a whole deal about, about that.
Primary building frontage, that would count, that would, the sides would be Trancas Road, the front would be Coast Highway. In the case of this, one side, the frontage on one side is PCH, the fronting is, on the other side is Cross Creek Road.
But the thing about that, John, is that in this case, the frontage, to me, to my mind, the frontage is the area where people are going in and out of the store, that's the front.
And then you don't count the backage, which is where there's no doors.
Well, that's true.
Like on PCH. So it, so they're counting them both, so it's double what it should be.
There, there is actually a definition of building frontage. Exterior building wall of a ground-floor business establishment on the side or sides of the building fronting and/or oriented toward a public street or highway. Building frontage shall be measured continuously along the building wall for the entire length of the building, including any portion thereof which is other than parallel to the remainder of the wall.
Right, and all of these are listed as the frontage and the interior courtyard.
Okay, but these are the approved, existing approved, so they're not relevant to the current application?
No, they're relative to the calculation. You have to measure the number of feet and calculate it, okay? And by using both, you're doubling it. Each sign is different, each building's different, okay? But you get a maximum of X, and when you double it, you get 2X.
What, what do you think the word "primary" means in that phrase?
Well, here, primary frontage?
Yeah.
There's only one frontage. It's got to be primary.
But, so why did, why do they use the word "primary"? Why didn't they just say the frontage?
I don't know, but I'm not gonna, you know, think of what somebody wrote 25 years ago and say, gee, they meant the interior when they said the exterior. I mean, that is, to me, as clear as a bell. And I just noticed this on this chart, all of the first, well, actually, there's a bunch there interior, but all of the first 10 or 12 are doubled.
Have you, Mr. Arnone, do you have a, anything to add on the issue of the size in relationship to the primary street frontage?
Yeah, I do. The city's, I think, longstanding interpretation of that is that you go, that the frontage would include, depending on where you are, could include right-of-way, it could also include the interior courtyard. And what you see here is the calculation is exactly how it was done in 2009 for the current Master Sign Program. So these are calculated exactly that way. That's been the city's interpretation consistently.
We've done about four sign, Master Sign Programs in the city, and I've never seen one of them deviate from that.
This one, our Master Sign Program from 2009 is calculated this way, that's what you see there.
Well, it's necessary to interpret it that way because some of the buildings don't face a street, and so then the tenant would not get any signage, so that's, he's correct about that.
No. Let me read you something else. This is in, in 1752060. "Entitlement strictly construed since the regulations provided in this chapter are established to protect and promote public health, safety, welfare, blah, blah, blah. Any sign entitlement authorized hereunder is strictly construed to further the purpose of this chapter, and all signs, shopping centers shall comply with each of the following," you know, and blah, blah, blah. It says you get a 30% variance. We can change from the law 30%, which is what we're doing. I think of the monument sign at 20 or 30. But it says, these are the rules, you gotta follow them. It doesn't say you gotta double them. And Trevor, if there's a question here, can you weigh in on this, on how you make primary frontage and these, this language into, for the same store, inside and outside? We used to, our old code used to say no signs in the back of a building. Well, apparently this has changed, but it's double. I mean, I didn't hear this in 19, you know, when we were studying the general plan, and 30 years ago, we thought it this way. No, this is, this is hard and fast, and it says you can't change it. We don't have the authority to change anything over the 30%. It says that right in there. Or 20 or 30, whatever it is, I could find it.
On this note, can I ask, I didn't recall anywhere in the staff report getting referred to these code sections, the 1752060 and 070. Did I just miss those? I, I feel suddenly at a loss because for everything I read, I didn't, wasn't directed to actually read these whole sections and find out precisely what we're supposed to be doing with signs.
What I did is I Googled, I mean, I went in the search engine and put signs. And up came chapter 17050, 752, the whole chapter. The whole chapter is on all the rules we're dealing with, and it says right in there, we can't mess with them. Can't give a 50% variance.
There's all kinds of rules in there.
Well, you want to read them, I got them here.
Steve?
Let me do a couple that while you guys are taking, maybe this. The outside signs, there's lit signs on PCH, right? Are there, is there a lit sign on Cross Creek?
Did you say wood?
Lit.
Lit, yes. So on PCH, that is illuminated, so those are the metal with illuminated. The monument sign is illuminated.
Okay.
Is that on PCH?
No, that's on Cross Creek.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Cross Creek.
Cross Creek, okay. Those are, the way, way you've described them, those are not dark-skies signs?
So they are, so...
No, they're not, no, 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 they're not, okay? Who designed them to be dark-sky signs?
So let me explain. So first, the dark-sky ordinance doesn't apply to signage. What we're doing is it has a brightness standard for, for where it does apply, and that's the 3,000 Kelvin for the color of it. And then there's also a light pollution one where we've said we will comply with both.
Okay, I don't care whether, whether you have dark skies, this is a city building, we've got a dark-sky ordinance. The building has to come in compliance with that dark-sky ordinance by October of this year. We're just going to help you get there quicker, all right? Now, you had a guy that you hired for La Paz, who was the electrical engineer, lighting engineer, okay? I suggest you get a hold of him because he's good. He's one that did our dark-sky ordinance. The, the signs are supposed to have some kind of a thing on top of them to prevent the light from trespassing up into the...
So we can take a condition that they have, that it has to comply with the dark-sky ordinance?
They, we, I want to have a condition so that they come back, you've got an engineer certified that they're dark-sky compliant. Okay with that?
Yeah, we can certify, we can provide.
Second thing I want to do is have a condition that says by October of this year, you bring back some evidence that this whole building is dark-sky compliant.
So I don't know the ordinance well enough to know if that's the requirement.
Commissioner Euring, I've been told that the dark-sky ordinance doesn't apply to signage, so they wouldn't have to do anything for signage.
I understand what the, this is a city building. If we don't set the standard for what we're doing here, okay, I, I don't know where we're going to set it. So let's do it right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused what you, what you want to have done since...
What I want to have done is have them sit down with some electric, the, the lighting engineer, and make sure the signs are dark-sky compliant, okay? And all that may entail was, is the color of the light and putting some kind of a shield across the top to prevent the light from going up into the building. The second thing I want to do is make sure by October of this year, the whole building is dark-sky compliant. And the reason is, what they've had, they've got a series of lights that go across the whole top of the building that they've had there forever, and I don't know what the hell they're there for, okay, for aliens landing or something. They're off right now, but I want to make sure they don't come back on, because that looks ugly, right?
You, you may be entirely right, but it's not part of this application, it's not part of what's before us, it's not part of the agenda.
This is a Master Sign application, not a CUP amendment, correct?
Look, they want Master Sign.
They don't have to pass it.
And what, what, he said it's okay with him.
So, well, I'm not sure I understand that part, but for the dark sky, there's two things that I think are relevant here. There's the lighting color and the light trespass provisions of the dark-sky ordinance.
Right.
And we can comply with both of those.
Okay, that's, that's what I want.
Now, I don't know that it means a physical barrier because these are extremely dim lights.
I don't know how to do it either, okay? I mean, I want, I tried to do enough research coming in here, and there's a whole bunch of stuff, and they say just, what you want to do is prevent the light from trespassing up into the environment. And I don't know if that's a shield, how you do that, but a lighting engineer can help you get that done.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can provide evidence that the lighting color and the light trespass provisions of the dark-sky ordinance, we will, we will show, we'll have to certify, comply with.
Cool.
We'll cert, have to certify, compliance with when we pull the, each permit.
Okay, and then you have any problem with making the whole building dark-sky compliant by October?
So that I don't know, they're doing a, we're fine with that, I'm told.
I got two that I want, good. How many lit signs are inside the building, in the inside?
Oh. The lit signs are the stairway, if you're going up to the second floor on the stairs, that has the four tenant signs, those will be the same, backlit with a very dim lighting. And then I believe there are the two along the driveway, that they're kind of interior, but they're along the driveway, those are the primary signs that are lit as well.
Along the parking lot side?
Yes.
Okay, so there's four, you're saying there's four additional signs?
And then the, the James Pierce sign is backlit as well.
So there's five additional signs that are, that are lit up?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, they're, they're in the code, they're in the program, but there's, there's nothing else in the courtyard. It's the James Pierce and I think those two buildings, and then the one that go into the second story.
Okay.
I count 17 just on the first floor.
Lit?
Yes.
Well, but I think that's including the monument sign at where each tenant is considered a separate sign?
I don't know, but let's make sure.
Not the monument sign, but just the, the blue marks on the wall on the plan. Tenant ID signage?
Could I ask what page you're looking at, Commissioner?
No, okay, those, those are, not all those are lit, okay.
Because the, the blue marks do not mean lit signs.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Those are the two bits I...
Within the courtyard, they're not lit.
I get some more, but Jeff, go ahead, that'll at least, go ahead.
Ugly. Are there other monument signs in the area, staff? Is this sort of unique, or how, how many others are there? I'm asking, well, go ahead if you know a fan.
I would say that almost every commercial center in that area, so the, the Jamestown folks, we were just discussing the Wine Apothecary property, they have a monument sign, they have that large sign that's supported by poles behind the gas station.
Are they, are they all compliant with the, the height restriction here?
No, these are signs that are, that existed prior to cityhood?
Oh, these are the pole signs you're talking about?
No, that's not true, Richard.
They function, so the signs I'm looking at, when you mentioned monument signs, so a shopping center identification sign that says the name of the center and has tenants. You have the Jamestown across the street, that, that's a sign that does not comply. You have the Cross, Cross Creek Shopping Center, the one there with John's Garden, Malibu Mutt, that has a monument sign.
It's got three.
Country Mart, but that was...
Does it comply?
No, that was prior to cityhood. The dog care, the, 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 the dog facility next door to the lumberyard, that has a pole-mounted sign, and then there is a monument sign I want to see at the corner of Webway and Cross Creek for the, it's, the doctor's offices, the pharmacy.
The, the monument sign itself is okay. I, I just, there was some language here that suggested that the sign has to be integrated into the architecture of the building, which this would not be, but it sounds like in the variance, we're allowing this separate signage. And then about the, the height requirement, they need to show exceptional circumstances to get that extra height, and one of the things cited is that it needs to be seen from a distance. And I just wondered, if the sign were six feet high, would it not be as easily seen from the furthest distance that you can see from there, which would be the corner at Cross Creek Road? I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't seem like there's, there's much distance that you need to see the sign from.
So ma, Commissioner, you're looking at me? I'd be happy to respond. Okay. So, so exceptional circumstances, or trying to achieve a special design as a standard, you can find either one. I would say for this, you could find both, because the property line is much further in than it appears. It's actually exactly flush, basically, with the edge of the building nearest Cross Creek. And then we have to be five feet in from that. So that's why this goes so far in. And at that distance, what we're doing for the aesthetic look is we're maintaining the landscaping, which will block the lower part of the sign. So be able to have those and have it be visible at all, the lower ones, it has to be up a bit. Then because we're so far in, the monument sign right up the street, which is twice as high, it's fifteen feet, and, and much wider. That monument, so that monument sign is ray out and it's high, we're gonna be half the size and in and narrower, and it's gonna be hard enough to see even at seven and a half.
Okay. Now, with respect to finding to, quote, "the sign is or will not be detrimental to surrounding uses or properties of the community in general," I think, the thing that's most important to me, and probably a lot of people, is that the, the lighting signage profile of this whole thing be as muted and sedate and classy as possible on the outside, and not cluttering the, the, just the general environment, driving by, walking by, and that there's more license, more leeway to, for signage within the place where you, if you're there, you're already in a mall, that's kind of the environment you expect. So I'm, my, my biggest concern is that everything from the outside is, is minimized, minimal and classy. And I think a lot of your design goes that direction, with the face on the PCH side. But some of those signs can be seen from the interior area out on the street. And so I, I guess I'm wanting to know, why do any of those businesses on the inside signage need seventy square feet each, when that's forty-six percent bigger than the forty-eight square feet allowed for the main sign, or a hundred percent bigger than the, the sign you're, you're allowing? The monument sign is thirty-five square feet, and you're allowing seventy percent square, or seventy square feet for each of those individual businesses? That just seems excessive to me.
That's consistent with the current entitlement, and it's what you see there right now. So for example, you look at the James Pierce, that's a, because it's in and high, those are actually bigger than they appear, because they're, you see it from a further distance. But that's a relatively large sign, and it's still the gentle backlit.
Those signs were never permitted.
Yeah, they're a foot high.
Oh, you say those are seventy square feet, Richard?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, those letter, the lettering that we see in there now, just that was an example that we, looked like the current signs would look approximately the same size, were eleven inches high. And I mean, you could read those from a thousand feet away, and you, we're only needing to read these signs from, you know, a hundred feet away.
I mean, we're tearing off, we're modifying our existing master sign program. And our existing master sign program has this signage, and that's what the expectation was when people signed leases.
Say that again? So you're saying, you're saying you lock them into leases over sign program?
Well, no, when people, when people sign leases, they wanna know what their signage rights are. And so you look at what they have. So we wouldn't wanna take, like, you wouldn't wanna make a, a tenant take down their sign.
One of the, one of the things that came up during our meeting, I walked through there, and I think Commissioner Hill brought it up, it sort of said, you know, there's a, a difference, you know, if, if you want a very professional look, okay, you don't have letters that are five feet high. And one of the questions we asked you to take a look at, how big are the letters gonna be on all these signs that are, did, did you get, get that information?
So I, I got some of it. It's, uh, let me find it.
While he's looking.
If I may interrupt for just a moment, I'm, I'm trying to follow the discussion, and there's this, the number seventy square feet being thrown around for James Pierce. And I, I'm sorry for my confusion, but I wanna be assist, assist, be able to assist. On page thirteen of the applicant signage program, they're showing the James Pierce tenant area, and they're identifying building E one hundred as a proposed twenty-five square foot sign, not seventy.
Just to be clear here, it says, where it says existing sign area, that means what was, that what was included in the two thousand nine approval. And when you see proposed secondary, you see it at twenty-five.
Did I get the seventy number from the existing approval?
Probably so, yes.
This is what you should be looking at.
Well, no, that, that is what I looked at, and that's what they're telling me is not to look at.
Why, this is the proposed sign.
Which one?
Proposed secondary signs.
Commissioner Mazza and Hills, are, are you guys looking at page twenty-six, the comparison chart? Because on there.
There's no page number on there.
Yeah, lower right, twenty-six, yeah.
The comparison chart does show the existing, which was the twenty, the two thousand and nine. And then if you, as you move over towards the right-hand side of the page there, you see their new square footages.
Okay.
Right.
I was looking at the existing, that's my bad. See.
How big are the letters?
So they're different for the different signs, for the.
Interior signs.
They're only twenty-five.
So the, the interior signs have to be per code. Those are the smaller ones, where we just have a, a square footage. For the ones that are the, the primary tenant signs, which are the ones you can see that we're just talking about, those are, those letters are one foot high.
And that's on the, that's on the PCH side of the building?
So, right now, I'm talking about the, so which are these?
PCH tenant signs.
Okay, they, yeah, this is the PCH tenant signs.
Okay. And then inside signs are how big?
So James Pierce currently is sixteen to eighteen inches. We were measuring that today. The intermix is about twelve inches, just for context for the existing signage today.
And what's the total size of that sign, the James Pierce sign?
The rest of the, you're putting up all these other signs above all the, how big are the letters on those gonna be?
Do you mean the, which signs do you mean?
The interior?
Yeah, the interior signs.
So we have an approximation here. The business tenant signs here are five inches high, right? Business tenant?
Yes, the second.
John, John asked a good question. The James Pierce that you're saying is sixteen to eighteen, eighteen inches high, what is the square footage of that sign?
They're telling us under twenty currently.
And so each of the, many of these would be allowed twenty-five, so they'd be actually larger than that?
Well, this is just the maximum permitted by the code. So I think that, I don't, I don't know if we have any today that are at the twenty-five, but this is what's permitted for secondary signs under the code.
So.
As though James Pierce isn't big enough already? I mean, I'd see, just seems like, can, maybe where it says twenty-five, we should just be across the board saying twenty?
Well, it is what the code says, where, I mean, that's what signage is allowed to do.
Yeah, that's eleven letters.
I mean, part of the challenge is you don't know who the, all the tenants will be over time, and you need more, if it has a longer name, you need a little bit more, if it has a shorter name, you need a little bit less.
Okay, but you're saying the inside signs, the, the height of the letters is five inches?
So, on the second floor, it was five. Yeah, I mean, that, so, yeah, I mean, that's the expectation, is that they would be five inches high.
For the wall ones? Yeah, the second floor business signage.
What does expectation mean? Do we have to, do we have to condition it, or is that what it's gonna be?
That's what's in the master sign program.
Okay.
Getting late. Okay, another question. Richard, this is a question for you. Blade signs are, are prohibited under seventeen fifty-two oh four oh. So, uh, they're actually prohibited, projecting signs. So how can we permit them if they're prohibited?
The previous planning director, when we did the master sign program that approves the blade signs that are in there today, the basis for those was that they did not project outward into the public right of way, they were on the in, internal courtyard area of this building. And the reason being was that in order to find some of the tenants, you had to stand far back without those signs. So it affected folks' wayfinding abilities, 'cause in some cases, on the second floor tenants, there is no area to stand that would give you a, you'd be, once you're on the balcony, you'd be in the air if you tried to get as far back from the building. So the previous planning director used those, given their size, you'll see they're about consistent with directional signage. So signage that is for wayfinding purposes. And since it was, like, as I mentioned, internal, that's how they were previously approved.
Well, and you remember, John, that, that when the staff presented us with a reworking of the sign ordinance, that was our wake-up call as to how incredibly poorly done the original ordinance is. It's completely riddled with contradictions and inconsistencies.
Yeah, but we, we backed off because nobody wanted to deal with it.
Well, we backed off because the replacement wasn't any better, but, but, but that's beside the point.
Okay, but what, my question is, they get, that, does that mean they're only allowed one sign? So if they have a blade sign, do they have to get rid of the other one? Each individual unit is only allowed one sign.
So I know the answer to that. Those are accessory signs, and that's how they were permitted in two thousand nine as well. So those are in addition to the other signs.
Yeah, but we're getting rid of all old signs, all old permits, right? We don't have to read that first eleven pages. So that's off the boards.
Well, it's what we're entitled to right now.
I know, you're entitled to what's in the code if you're getting rid of the old sign program.
And, and the code was interpreted as allowing these at that size, and they're very, I mean, these are tiny, these are three square feet.
I know. My question is, though, do you get two signs or one? 'Cause it says you can only have one.
These are additional. It, it, as.
Where in the code does it say you can have two?
Because there's a provision of the code that allows for accessory signs, and that these were considered accessory signs.
In other words, turn right and turn left is an accessory sign. Also, JCPenney is an accessory sign.
Accessory signs are used to improve the effectiveness of the sign program in relationship to the mass of the building. And it was that, that in two thousand nine, it was concluded that you, that, given this odd shape of the U shape and what you've got, that these blade signs would do that. And therefore, they were accessory signs, and that's in addition to the other tenant signage you got.
Is that from the code you just read us, or is that from the original?
The code.
That says accessory signs. I don't think the name of a store is an accessory sign, it's the second sign for the store.
John, just so I understand, the blade signs you're referring to, in the, the code refers to them as projecting signs? Am I reading this?
The word blade sign doesn't appear in the code.
No, it's.
Projecting sign is what's in.
There's a, a definition for a projecting sign, and it's prohibited, and I, that's because it would project, you know, far from the building, it would be obtrusive and all of that sort of thing. And these are, these are all interior to the courtyard, these are just typical wayfinding things you see in a lot of shopping centers. So it's, it's a very benign thing to help people find their way around. It's not, it's really not another form of, it's like an address almost.
And in addition, the reason why the applicant is limited to three square feet is because in the definition of directional signage, it talks about how these are additional signs for wayfinding, and a directional sign shall be no more than three square feet.
So.
So the blade signs are three square feet now, and the store signs are dependent upon the linear footage of the, the road?
Let, let, see if I can suggest a way to look at this. They've got an entitlement now. They have an existing sign program that allows them to do various things. They're asking for changes to that. They're asking for some, some additions to it. So instead of, instead of looking at it and seeing, going back to our, what I think everybody agrees is a miserable ordinance, that we try to think about whether this helps the environment of that particular shopping area, and helps the shopping environment, or whether it hurts it and, and is, and obtrusive.
Okay, I understand that. Who, who designed the sign program?
The architect team.
A professional sign designer, or?
I'm sorry, do you mean the overall, the overall style of it?
Came back and said, this, this is where the signs should go. Who did that?
Oh, so it was the original program was back in two thousand and nine, and what, it's, it's pretty basic. You want a sign on the wall at the store, and you want something to hang it on the store. There's nothing, I mean, beyond that, remember, this is a master sign program.
I just want a professional sign.
I mean, this, this might be, this might be helpful. This is a master sign program. We don't know exactly how many signs there will be. As you know, there's nowhere near the signs we're entitled to there now. It's as tenants come up and what they, what they actually need. But the typical thing is you would expect that you're gonna want a sign that identifies the stores that come up.
And I'm just, I mean, look, I've walked through that place, I don't know how many times. And, and, you know, one of the things that I noticed when I went is, is if you're standing someplace, you can, in one place, you can see almost everything, right?
Well, depends.
You're hiding some. So it was, and it was, it took me back to Craig's comment, that said, you know, smaller sometimes presents a more, a more professional image than bigger. So I just.
And that's the smoothest, so the overall renovations that you see are going on right now. It's a lot of teak wood, a lot of elegance. The exterior ones are gonna have these, these great metal blocks things. The whole idea is understated. And these signs we're talking about right now are tiny.
Understated, maybe. I don't know, I get to understated, but okay, I'll take that. What hours are, you know, the lit signs? What hours are they gonna be lit?
Oh, I don't know.
I was gonna suggest, I would suggest a condition that the exterior signage be turned off at ten PM unless the business is.
What we did at, what we did at Trancas was, they all had to be off at eleven.
Hang on, John, John, just hang on, let's just see what they got.
Or one hour after closing, whichever comes sooner.
Right.
So I unders, I, I think I was told dark sky requires eleven PM shut off, and so that would be fine?
No, no, no.
Or business closing, whichever is later, I think.
Whichever's earlier.
Yeah, that's.
James Pierce closes at six o'clock.
Pardon me?
Pierce closes at six o'clock.
Yeah, but you still wanna have the identity. You don't wanna have a sign go off whenever anyone closes.
I'm just talking about, I mean, look, the, I would not have a problem having the monument sign lit until late, because one of the things we talked about with the lady who owns the, the, the wine tasting thing there, she says, a lot of times, she's trying to get in there late at night, and the Uber driver won't drive in, 'cause he doesn't know what the hell is there. So having that monument sign lit up until late at night to make it easy for people, sounds like a real good idea. Now, I don't know why the rest of the signs have to be lit up till eleven o'clock at night, if there's nobody in the damn building.
Well, somebody, some people will be in some of the buildings, some of the shops.
I, I mean, I, I did a, a tour, I mean, a.
Well, I mean, right now, it's.
A search over.
Right now, there's a lot of empty spots.
They're seven o'clock, they're all closed.
Yeah, but Steve, the, the rules should be eleven PM or one hour after closing, whichever is sooner.
I'll take that.
I think part of, part of the question is whether, since this is, we're talking about a whole, a multi-tenant place, and you've got a couple of restaurant spaces in there that are gonna stay open later than the retail, do you want to have the whole, all of the signs go off at the same time, or just they start to turn off individually? That seems a little strange to me that you have.
I think that would be very weird.
While certain things are still open, and people are gonna be walking around in there.
That's the same case as, as Trancas, and that's what they do.
So.
Or supposed to.
And just to be clear, what the dark skies ordinance says, curfew, all outdoor lighting shall be extinguished by eleven PM or close of business, business, whichever is later. That's what the dark skies ordinance says.
I'm reading it too, yes.
Whoever's later.
Yeah.
As long as they're all shielded, I can live with that, I guess.
Great, we'll take a motion.
Are we moving in the direction of a, of a consensus on any aspect of this, or should we try to suggest that perhaps the applicant should come back at a later date?
Sounds like there's consensus.
Not, well, then, if it's consensus, let's talk about, let's some sort of motion. I thought we were headed that way when Steve was talking about the.
Well, I've got, I mean, I've got some things that, I, when, when we get to a motion, you know, we've got this dark sky complying sign, okay?
Yeah, I have.
We've got the buildings by October thi, this year, meeting the dark sky complying component.
Well, I, what I wanted, I, I'm fine with doing it tonight. If, Richard, do you have an answer for the table counting more than a chit of? Can we put a provision that they must follow the code? Because we're not allowed to give a variance more than thirty percent.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm in a similar spot, where I, I don't, I, from the conversation here, it sounds like we really don't have a good definition. So I'm just trying to find whatever definitions I see. And one of them says that we're not allowed more than the length to a square foot for your primary. We seem to be conforming there, but I don't know the rules on secondary. So I don't really have any section of code I can look at to say this looks good or not.
Well, it's all here.
Yeah, what do you think we ought to do? I mean, you know.
We, we can say, follow codes seventeen fifty-two oh four oh.
If we've learned anything, it's making decisions late at night, we suck.
Well, but there is a, there is a cost to all of this, particularly when you start talking about senior partners of white shoe law firms. So let's see, it is, it, does anybody have the idea? I know what, I, I have a question about how we get that provision in. I would like to throw in some provisions about how they have to deal better with their parking situation, because there are a lot of, parking places are being taken up by people from other shopping centers, and, and surfers, and things like that. But I don't think that's in front of us, so I'm having a hard time seeing how I'm gonna get that into a, into a, a resolution. But if, if you're willing to put forward that. But do you, if, if you're willing to put forward that, the things that you were talking about, let's start talking about a, a, uh, motion bef- before I turn into a pumpkin.
Do you want me to list the things that I've heard consensus about so far?
Well, can I, can I ask Trevor if we can put this in there? I'm gonna wanna have this come back, so we can read it.
Mm-hmm.
Can it come back with a staff report on, because we have all these calculations that aren't properly done, come back and say, this, this, and this does not follow the code? And then we can, because my intention is to follow the code. We can go, we can decide to do thirty percent bigger than anything we wanna do. But if we're giving more signs than they should have, or bigger signs, that are more than thirty percent, I just need to know that.
The problem with this table is you have too much information before you.
Exactly.
If you look at this table, you'll see, for example, let's pull the first one. They say ninety-one, uh, the frontage along Cross Creek Road, ninety-one mall interior, hundred and eighty. But then you go to what they're proposing, and it's only fifty square feet.
Yeah, but I don't know if that is, I, I don't, I, personally, I don't know if that's correct, fifty.
Well.
I don't, because, you, you, because I haven't calculated it. And, and I don't mind giving a variance, but I know I can't give more than thirty percent. So all I wanna do is have this come back with a report saying, this, this, and this was not allowed under the thirty percent variance.
The code allows you one square foot for one linear foot. So if you just essentially strike the plus and everything behind it, so on that first one, you have ninety-one, well, twenty-five and twenty-five is less than ninety-one. Yeah. Uh, the, the problem here is, there's an assumption being made that the applicant is asking for more, and they actually aren't. Um, as you go through this, if you pull building D one hundred, it says thirty-two linear feet on PCH. Forget reading the rest of that. They're only proposing twenty-five square feet. They would be allowed, oh, sorry, I think twenty-five.
Uh, accessory is an additional three square feet.
Either, uh, what I'm trying to get at, though, is, um, essentially, you've got too much information here, so it's really important to focus simply on the, the right-hand side here, and really just the first, and ignore what's the plus. Because that plus, they did not include any of that in their, um, in their signage. And their signage here is actually less than what was approved. For example, the James Purse sign that faces Legacy Park, which most likely was that large signage area that folks were talking about at seventy square feet, that signage is no longer proposed. It's not on the plan to have signage that faces Legacy Park. So you're actually approving a smaller plan here.
Yeah, all I, all I wanna do is, when, if we pass this, is have somebody go through and check that, 'cause we're doing this on the fly. And we are doing it on the fly. You want me to check every one of these? Over here, tell.
Do we, do we need to strike part of the table? Richard, is there something that we can do to, to add clarity to what's being approved here?
What could be done is simply to, like I said, strike everything beyond the plus twenty-five, uh, beyond the plus.
On which page?
Everything on page twenty-six.
Page twenty-six.
When you look at that second row.
Strike second row?
Well, no, don't strike the second row. What you wanna do is strike out everything in the, the items that are to the right of the plus.
You're talking to the, about the linear frontage column.
Right, and then if you get rid of the existing signage area column, um, now you've got a correlation between allowed per code and linear frontage. What staff could do in a revised resolution, if the commission would like, is that we can bring you back a revised resolution, 'cause I think that's the direction we're ha, we're going towards, that has an exhibit attached to the resolution, which would be a table with only one frontage, and the area allowed per code, and the area proposed. And eliminate existing sign area, and eliminate this, um, extraneous information of interior space. 'Cause that, the commission made clear.
Just a second.
They don't want, they don't, they do not want us counting.
I got that. Now, could we add a provision that says, we're approving as per code those signs, as of the frontage? You come back and give us those numbers, and, and we've already approved them. If you say there's no problem.
Some of the stuff they're proving, John, is below code. I think.
I don't care about, if it's below code, no problem. If our resolution says, we're approving this table.
My suggestion, uh, my suggestion, what I was trying.
Maximum code.
W- what I was trying to offer for Commissioner Mazza, uh, was that we could bring back a revised resolution, and then clean this table up so that it's very clear, and put that as an exhibit into the resolution, so that it, we're clearly demonstrating consistency, which is what you're requesting and wanting verification of.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I?
Go ahead.
You got that, Trevor?
Yeah, I think, I think I have consensus on the changes you want brought back. If you want me to give it a shot.
Tell us, give us what we've got so far.
All right. I'm gonna give us.
I've got something, I've got something still.
I'm gonna give it a shot. What I understand, um, the con, the consensus so far is to return with a revised resolution and staff report that would adopt staff's, um, proposed recommendation with the following changes. First, remove the existing condition section on pages one to seven. Clarify that this supersedes the current master, uh, sign, uh, sign program. Sign, add a condition that says signage and the building shall comply with the dark sky ordinance by October first, two thousand and twenty, including that signage shall not exceed three thousand Kelvin, and shall limit light trespass as required by the dark sky ordinance. Add a finding for exceptional circumstances, uh, and, uh, special design. Strike on page twenty-six, everything for the existing sign column, and everything after the plus mark in the linear frontage column. That's the extent of what I have.
And you're putting that in the resolution.
That will be in the, the revised resolution will be brought back to you.
And the other thing we mentioned is that they have to follow the, uh, dark sky condition of, uh, eleven o'clock or one hour after closing, whichever is later.
That's already in, that's already requiring compliance with dark sky ordinance, so that would be.
Well, do we apply the whole dark sky ordinance to them, or just?
They're gonna have to comply anyway.
For the corporation, you do.
I need one clarification. Uh, along with my concern about what's visible from the highway and from the public streets, there are several of the shops on the inner area that are up above that have big signs. There's a requirement for colors and materials, earth tones required, no bright tones in the, in the LIP, acceptable colors shall be limited, blah, 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 blah. Are we on the same page so far? Do you know what section I'm talking about?
Yeah, it requires, you have to have four colors consistent.
LIP six point five B five. I, what I'd like to know is that, are those signs that, that we'll be able to clearly see from the pub, public space, will those correspond necessarily in that muted sort of earth tone kind of thing? Or will they, like, if the client is, I don't know, Jamba Juice or something, and their corporate logo is bright pink, would, would that be allowed or not?
So, so the code allows four colors, and then one or two of the colors have to be consistent throughout the, the campus. For the ones that are on the PCH sign.
Forget those. Just the ones that are visible on the second tier, on the inside.
All of them have to follow this.
So they'll all, they'll all follow that, but, but we'll even be doing, uh, more muted than that for the ones going up the stairs. That'll be the black letters that we identified, and the monument sign, and the PCH sign.
I'm just thinking, uh, we've got all the outside covered, but I'm thinking of the top on the inside.
That, that'll be subject to the four.
Look out.
That'll be subject to the four colors, and one or two of the colors have to be consistent for the entire campus.
Okay.
John, you happy?
Is that your motion?
Yeah, it's my motion.
I'll make a motion, whatever Trevor said.
You second it.
That's what, that's what I want.
Your motion, John, seconded. Is there further discussion?
I do have a couple of clarifications. Just, um, if we strike pages one to eight, it seems like pages one to three still have value. Do we?
Uh, pages one to seven is what I have.
One to seven, sorry. Is there any value in keeping pages one to three, just so there's clarity on what you're trying to do with this project?
It'll be part of the file, because it's part of the submittal, but as far as like.
Okay, the official, okay.
Program that you're approving.
Okay, and then just, just to, again, this is, uh, not extremely clear, as we've all established. Just for what's captured on table on page twenty-six, I just wanna make sure I've got right in my head what we mean by a primary sign versus a secondary sign versus what we've designated as accessory. If I look, for example, at unit C one-ten, they've got frontage, which has thirty-five feet on Cross Creek. And so whether that frontage is exposed directly to Cross Creek or not, let's say it's hiding behind another building, you don't really see Cross Creek from that building, that still per code is what our calculation is based on for their linear frontage, correct, Richard?
I believe I understood your question, and yes, it's the, the frontage of the tenant space to the road.
Okay, so then that tenant has allowed thirty-five square feet of primary, and they're entitled, per code, section three-one-five dot six, another secondary sign up to twenty-five square feet. And then direct, at the planning director's discretion on approval in twen- two thousand and nine, they allowed another three square foot sign. Is that all right?
No.
Richard?
So it says up to twenty-five square feet, and, sorry, I'm trying to explain this, it's getting late, so I may lose myself. Um, they can have up to twenty-five square feet if that, if there's the availability of that. It may, if, if they have a thirty-five-foot frontage, they're allowed a total of thirty-five square feet of sign area. If they take twenty-five and use it for the primary, they would only be allowed another ten for the secondary. They're not allowed another twenty-five on top of it.
So they're capped at that thirty-five?
Yes, and then the directional sign, that, the blade sign that we were all here discussing, um, the directional signs in our sign code, that's just a, a three-square-foot number that is a separate number from the frontage calculation.
Got it. So effectively, looking at unit C one-ten again, they'd have the, thirty-five foot would be their use for either primary or secondary, max. They have no additional twenty-five square feet for a secondary, and they can have that directional sign, three foot.
Yes, you are correct.
So I do think.
Let me ask.
Excellent question, and somehow, when the resolution comes back, can you just capture what you just told me? That's important.
So, uh, could I just clarify, 'cause I think that's, I think there was, uh, misstatement. I th, I think that the, um, secondary is separate from the primary, and I, I know it's late, and you're gonna be doing an updated, an updated version of this, but maybe that could be clarified there. I think what was just stated could be off a bit. So, so wait, I, I wanna play on that. So look at unit C one-ten. Are you saying primary thirty-five, secondary twenty-five, accessory three? Is what you believe you're entitled to? If, if, assuming that thirty-five foot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I see, that's a big difference, and we, we need to clarify that.
So primary and accessory signs combined shall not exceed one square foot for each foot of primary building.
Okay, so you're capped at thirty-five.
So the primary and the accessory.
But then in addition.
Because we have sides of the buildings that do not face a right-of-way, we get the secondary sign of up to twenty-five square feet.
And that's, that's probably why.
That's how the current program is, is calculated.
And that's probably why you put all your proposals just capped at twenty-five, 'cause you know that's the max.
And so, and those are the interior signs, they cannot be illuminated. And the primary signage is all the exterior.
Can we clarify the table, Richard, when this comes back?
Yeah.
Yeah, there can be a clarified table.
Richard, can you just clarify that when it comes back, when the table?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just approving what's on the table. We're not saying it's that plus whatever's in the code, right?
Well, the table has to reflect the code, and we just wanna clarification of what the code.
It's a sign program.
Agreed, but at least the code we should.
Okay, I think we hammered this enough. That, we've got a motion.
We got a motion, and the motion says we're gonna include, when the resolution comes back, Mr. Mark, Commissioner Marks' last.
So that's a friendly amendment to the motion that.
That's incorporated in there. I still make my motion to.
Okay, so the motion was, as I, as I listed before, with the clarification that Richard will clarify the table.
Right.
Per the current discussion about the primary, secondary, and accessory signs.
Yes.
Okay, and as a, as a seconder, you agree with that, John, right?
Yep.
Okay, Kathleen, please call the board.
I gotta ask an obvious question. So we're all good with the variances?
We're on what?
We didn't talk about the six-foot variance, we didn't talk about the height of the sign, we went.
On the monument sign?
Sorry.
There are other monument signs that are so much bigger.
Okay, all right, I'm, I just, we're just confirming.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner hearing?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I, uh, I wanna, uh, ask about.
By rule, we don't take up anything.
No, we don't take another thing. So what, I'm gonna make a motion to continue item five C two. What do you say, Bonner?
Can I make a, well, go.
And six A also?
Well, I don't know if they're gonna be same date, if they are.
Six, six A is just a, a rep, a quick report from Richard, if you wanna just.
No, no, six A is gonna take a while.
I'd like to point out that on five C, we have the applicant here, and it may be.
I'm not having a meeting after ten-thirty, after we blew the last one. That's our, you know, we. No, I'm making a motion to continue them to win, Bonner.
You can do it to the next meeting.
Which is March third?
March second.
March second. That's a motion, and you guys don't agree with it, fine. March third.
Second, March second.
Okay, so it was a motion of second to bring five C and six A back on March second.
That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None that you're unanimous.
Me, I'm opposed.
I move readjourn.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that you're unanimous.
Me, I'm opposed. I just wanted to finish that one.